Of the addition showing its total height. We got some photographs, but I didn't get any kind of a drawing or anything. Or I didn't see where the photographs were modified to show where the addition would be. And it well, it shows the deck quite clearly. So I guess that's where it's going to be.
Well.
On the other side of the house. That's it.
Yeah.
Anyway.
I don't, I don't have a drawing. It's just going to be uniform with the building.
How tall will it be, Ms. Duncan?
Well, we're looking as high as the building is.
Okay.
So we can add cathedral ceiling.
Does it be no higher than it currently is?
No, no, it won't be any higher.
The question I had about, and maybe I missed where, oh, I guess, I guess the scale is on there. So I could use it by scale, but I, I couldn't really tell how big the grass area is as being converted. But if it's.
That's eighteen by sixteen.
Pardon me?
It's eighteen by sixteen. It's a driveway right now. And you know, it has new gravel. So you know, it drains well. But if you want grass in there, we'll put grass in there.
That's what's indicated on the amended site drawing that was submitted to us.
Exactly. Yep.
So if I'm understanding that correctly, I'm looking at the amended drawing and I'm seeing where it says grass behind the garage. That is the.
It's actually on the side of the garage. Yeah.
Oh, okay. Side of the garage.
Mm hmm.
The sixteen foot dimension of the garage all the way to it looks like what would be the property line? Is that right?
Yes. Uh huh.
Okay.
So Peter, I didn't know exactly what the dimensions of that were, but based on the scale, I had estimated that seventeen by seventeen, which is a little less than what Ms. Duncan just reported. But that comes out to two hundred eighty nine square feet. So in actuality, it would be a little more than that. If you deduct that from the total unvegetated square footage in the shoreline zone that's as provided to us in the application, which is two, two thousand eight hundred ninety seven square feet, you get twenty six, you bring it down to twenty six hundred and eight square feet. Twenty percent coverage in the shoreline zone would be twenty seven eighty eight square feet. So it's well below it now. Now it's well below it before it was over it, but now it's below it.
Good. As far as the height of the bill, oh, it's, I guess, Mac is ready.
I'm sorry?
No, Rich, you were talking. Go ahead.
I jumped in. I should ask for permission, I guess.
No, no, no. Fine. Go ahead. Go ahead.
As far as the height of the building, can we, it isn't, I guess, clear in any of the materials here. Can we approve this thing when we do or whatever with the condition that it be no higher than the existing structure and cover that? I'd hate to think that we'd have to wait another two weeks to get this thing approved. Man, it appears to be fine, or at least anyway.
So Rich, I believe that we can cover that with a condition, I would, I would say. But that's just my own thinking. Mac, you had something?
Yeah, I, I don't know. I, on the one hand, I think when it's all said and done, I think it'll be fine. Meaning I don't see any major problems and I don't think anybody's trying to get away with anything. And I think it will be what the applicant says. At the same time, I feel like we need to treat people equally. And I just don't think this application is equal to what we're requiring of other people. For example, if we've sent other people back because they don't have drawings of proposed structures, I don't think it's right to let this applicant get away with that. And the, the, the new drawing shows a portion of the driveway. There's a line and it says grass, but in nowhere in the application did I see any indication that says we're taking away the driveway and we're putting in grass. So, you know, I'm left to interpret that. And I might even argue that we should see a picture of what they're trying to convert from driveway to grass. I don't know. I just, I feel like it should be more clear. And part of that, we didn't, we didn't talk about the fact that when this application first came on, there was discussion as to exactly where Salmon Lake is. There's confusion between the high water line versus what appears to be the vegetative end of the property line. And then the word Salmon Lake. So it's, I think it's up to interpretation where the seventy five feet line is. So, you know, again, I don't think anybody's trying to do anything bad. I just feel like it's not a clear application. And I feel like we've been holding other applicants to a higher standard of clarity. And I think we should be treating everybody the same.
So Mac, I wanted to make sure to mention one thing. Did you see the, the letter? That it looks like Duncan submitted to Gary, which talks about, I think it's intended to to implement the application because it says, hi, Gary, I've just adjusted the gravel to grass next to the garage and printed grass. Please let me know if you need anything else regards Clean Dick Duncan. I just wanted to make sure to mention that that, that was indicated by them, by the applicants.
I mean. Yes, but that, that doesn't tell me that there's existing gravel, impervious surface that we are going to convert to grass. I don't know. It's, it's, it says I've adjusted gravel to grass. That could be interpreted as that's, there's actually grass there, not gravel. You know what I'm saying? It's not clear what they're, it doesn't say we're doing this because we need to stay below the twenty percent threshold.
Okay. George?
Um, this is sort of builds on Max's point. The unfortunately, in the application, the amount of square footage, unvegetated square footage wasn't, is now inconsistent with that of the site drawing. So it doesn't reflect the reduction as a result of proposal to convert part of the driveway to gra, uh, from gravel to grass. I'm speaking specifically in question number eight.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't, yeah, I don't understand this because the drawing has a fifteen by eighteen square that the driveway is all gravel. So I don't know what else you want. You know, I mean, I, you want me to shovel the snow to show that it's gravel? We had new gravel put in last year.
No, what, what I was speaking to was the actual application form you completed and signed.
Oh, 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 okay.
Question number eight on that, which refers to the same subject matter, asks for the number of square feet of unvegetated surface in the shoreline zone. And, and that not, the number on your application now is inconsistent with that on your amended site drawing.
I see.
Obviously, they need to be the same. Otherwise, it just adds to a lot of confusion down the line.
Yeah.
Rich?
I did, I missed, I remember last meeting where we talked about the clarity or lack of clarity of where the normal high water line is based on the drawing. I was wondering if Ms. Duncan could offer some description or discussion on the normal high water line. As shown on the drawing, it's drawn almost as if it's normal high water lines out in the lake. This goes with.
I, I don't quite understand what it is you need there. From what I measured when, you know, things in the fall were visible, it looked like we measured it from the shore to, to the house and it was seventy five feet.
Right, but Ms. Ms. Duncan, do you have the map in front of you that, that you submitted to us?
Yes, I have the drawing.
Okay, so on that drawing, you have an arrow that says seventy five feet. And it's going from the house down to what?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Sure.
High water line.
Right. And so that is beyond the shoreline. Yes.
So, but there's text, it's Salmon Lake, and then it looks like vegetation doesn't start until like a third of the way up the arrow.
Right, right. If we were to go from the shoreline, the shore itself to the house, it would be fifty feet. So it's an additional from the shore, and I wasn't sure how to measure that. So I kind of guesstimated at the high water line. But from the shore itself to the cabin, to the camp, it's fifty feet. But I don't know if you call the shoreline high water, you know, I don't, I don't know.
Peter, it does sound, oh, I'm sorry.
George, go ahead.
I, I just want to make sure we don't get bogged down in semantics here. The ordinance refers to the normal high water line of the, of the pond. That's a defined and, and usually represented in the field by the rocks along the shoreline and where you can see the high, high watermark on those rocks. So my question for you, Ms. Duncan, is the, the seventy five feet or the fifty feet, whichever, which number is the distance from the rocks along the shoreline to the front of your camp? Is it seventy five feet or fifty?
Fifty feet.
Fifty feet. All right. Thank you.
I guess what we probably need to do is some calculations of square footage to make sure that the square footage within a hundred feet and a seventy five feet are all within the limits. And.
And they're not, they're not going to be. If this is fifty feet, then she can't do that addition. She probably enclosed the deck, but she can't do the addition on the side because she's got, she's over a thousand.
And I'm, I'm estimating Gary, I heard, first of all, thank you for your input because I was trying to count where's back on the drawing to say, okay, if you're going to be at some distance here, what part of the camp is within now seventy five feet? And then what part of that would be where the addition is? And it seemed like it's most of it. So I'm, I'm probably due to this new information should, I'm thinking it should be reconsidered by the applicant. That would be my first guess. And to put a, put some more button into calculations based on this, this value that we're talking about, the distance from the high watermark is a Mrs. Duncan, what we're looking at, we have the ordinance that we would use. It, and it talks about distances. It's called non-conforming structures is the section I'm in. And when they're talking about any type of expansion within certain distances from the normal high watermark, and that's what we're going by.
Okay.
So, I don't know. That's my thought. I don't know if any other board members have, think something to say about.
Yeah. No, I, I, it looks like there's actually ten thousand seventy two square feet already there. And if that's the case, and it's fifty feet from the water, I don't think we can approve anything more square footage at all.
So we can't cover the deck? Which is already existing?
No, I, I believe you can enclose the deck, but the other, the other piece would have to be eliminated.
Okay. So in enclosing the deck, then we can go as high as the existing building?
Correct. At least in my mind.
Right. No, no higher than the existing.
Yeah, maximum of the existing building.
Right, right.
So Mrs. Duncan, so with this new information, you know, I, I would suggest consider one of a couple of options that we could do, you know, in sort of in cooperation with you. One, we could act on this application. I'm guessing it would turn into a denial. If you wanted us to do that. I suppose another action, you could withdraw your application, revise it in consultation with Gary and, and the shoreline zone ordinance that we have so that you, you would present back to the board an application that would, would pass muster.
Uh huh. Yeah, I like that second, your second idea about withdrawing this.
Okay.
And re-submitting it.
Yes, that's one idea. And Mac, you had something?
Yeah, if she does take away the addition, then she does not have to remove the gravel from the driveway. Is that correct?
Yeah. Yes, that's correct. So that's, that's the good news.
Okay. So now would I just withdraw this one and resubmit another one?
I, I think so. And I just wanted to make sure I checked with the board to make sure that administratively speaking, we're handling this in a way that's, that would be all legit. But I would, I would suggest that that would be a possibility. Does anybody else have a, an idea? Yes, George?
I agree with your intent. I, I think if we tabled it, we could accomplish the same thing without her having to pay a second permit fee.
Oh, I see. I see what you're saying.
That would be good.
Yeah, I thought so.
Thank you.
That's a better idea. Thank you, George, for keeping us. Um, and I want to make sure we, we get back to some points that were brought up before about clarity in, in the application, whatever is submitted. Having accuracy in terms of, so Mrs. Duncan, when I'm thinking about that, I'm thinking about like the arrow between the existing camp and what we now know as the shoreline. So.
Right. Change to that. Yeah.
Yep. And I'm sure I've, I've missed something in there, but, but I think you understand what we're going for. Just something to depict whatever is in the application that would be what is going to happen. So.
And you want me to do a drawing also of the, what we're planning on putting on top of the deck? Or it's just going to look like the building itself?
Yes, ma'am. I think a drawing would be good. That, that is one of the things we ask for in, is required in the ordinance, looking for those drawings.
An easy way to do that would be to take one of your photograph, the photograph you have of the current deck and modify that into a drawing, showing what's, it'll look like after it's completed construction.
Mm hmm. Okay. I can do that.
I think might be good to reiterate, make sure we're all on the same page here. So we're not, um, Ms. Duncan doesn't, you know, have to, you know, everything goes according to plan. Let's put it that way. So the first would be the addition would be, could not be approved. So that would have to be eliminated from your site drawing. The.
Right.
The distance from the camp to the high watermark would need to be modified to fifty feet rather than seventy five feet as is currently indicated. Third.
And the driveway stays the same.
Yeah, you can eliminate the grassy, new grassy area of the driveway and keep your brand new gravel. So change that back or, and, and lastly, if you could just provide a side view of the the enclosure of the deck.
Okay.
And make sure number eight, right, the value in number eight in the application matches, right, is, is real.
Yeah, good point. That, that'll be different again because of the additional be eliminated.
Okay.
So, so does that help, Mrs. Duncan?
Oh, yes. Yes.
Okay. All right.
And, and, and so how, how soon do I need to get this in?
Well, we, we meet on the first and third Thursdays of the month.
That would be January seventh is your next meeting.
Okay.
We need your application. We need your application a week before that.
Okay.
And we understand that with holidays, it can be very busy. So it has to push off to the, be the, what? Fourteen days later, the twenty first.
Of January?
Yeah.
So January twenty first is when the meeting will be?
Yep. So we would need it the four.
You would need it what?
So we would need it one week before that. So that would be the fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
I have, Peter?
Yes, sir.
I have been told not to put anything on the agenda for the twenty first because we have a commercial application for Sean Grant. And that's, that's all Anthony wants on there.
Okay. So, um, thank you very much for saying that, Gary. That's a good reminder. So that, Mrs. Duncan, if you want to do it in January, then aim, please aim for the first meeting.
Which, which is the seventh.
The seventh. Okay. All right. And so a week before that would be December, the end of December.
Right.
All right.
Thirty one is it, right? So.
Okay.
So before you go, I, we talked about abling this so that there could be some recalculations and revisions to, to the application. Does the, is the board in agreement with that sort of notion? I'm just sort of looking for consensus there. And. So I would entertain a motion then.
I'd make a motion to table the application pending additional information.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
And seconded. Any more discussion? And Mrs. Duncan, you know what we're looking for?
I do.
Thank you.
Um, thank you.
I will then take a vote there. We'll do a, a roll call vote. So all in favor of table. So George?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mac?
Yes.
He's there. Craig? So Craig, can you give me a thumbs up if you would vote yes?
He doesn't have sound, I guess.
Maybe not. Pete, do you vote in favor of tabling this? Pete, you can give me a thumbs up if you can hear me. Okay. So one, two, three, four, I would say five in favor. And due to technical difficulties, we're not able to thoroughly communicate with Craig. But we'll go with them. Five in favor, none opposed. I will say Craig abstains just for, due to technical difficulties. So it's been tabled.
Now I can see.
Okay.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you, Mrs. Duncan. Have a nice night.
You too. Thanks for your time.
Okay.
Bye now.
Bye.
Bye.
Next up on the, on the agenda is a continued review of the town's subdivision ordinance with Kevin Leonard Charles Peddleman. Charles, thanks for coming in this evening.
No problem. I, I, so I can kind of kick us off. I hope everyone had a chance to kind of review. I know you guys had talked about it at your last planning board. I don't, I think it was a little bit more of an impromptu thing. So I apologize for not being able to be there. But it looks like you guys started going through chapter, article ten, I mean. And you, according to George, you guys got to section two. Or through it. So we can kind of go it, set, I don't know, what was, Peter, what were you guys doing? Or through it, so we can kind of go at, set, um, I don't know, what was, Peter, what were you guys doing? Um, how, how, how are you guys going through this? Were you going section by section, or?
Uh, Charles, we had been going section by section, um. And I guess some of the major things that we had seen before was if there was some kind of a, um, something in, in current statute that would, that would drive a change to point that out, we would ask that you point that out to us. Or if we had current things that were in here that we knew were, was, uh, was in need of revision, we'd point those things out to you. And if you don't mind, um, I would say that George has supplied some very astute.
Yeah, I, I have those as well.
Yeah, so I would say let's go with that.
Yeah, we can just do it in the sections, and I assume if we do, after we go through, we'll say we'll start at ten point two B, which is the water quality section. Uh, we'll kind of discuss that. Um, we'll start there, because that seems to be where George's notes start. And then before we move to the next section, we'll just kind of slowly go through and see if there's any major issues or things to look at. We won't go line by line. I don't think that's the best interest of time, but, yeah, cool. Um, George, you want to start us off with the water quality, with your comments on that, if you will?
Sure, um, so in the model ordinance, um, a- and this section applies to ensuring that the water, the drinking water supply, the groundwater underlying a subdivision that will be the drinking water supply in all cases in Belgrade, since we don't have public drinking water systems, uh, is of a drinkable quality, um, potable quality meets state and federal drinking standards. Um, I personally find the, uh, what the model ordinance lacking in enough guidance to applicants and to us to determine how, uh, we should go about, um, evaluating that. And when we got this far with Nick and we talked about talking about it more, um, but, um, uh, one suggestion that I made in my memo, uh, and comments, uh, is um, to try to put the burden more on the applicant. As you know, a lot of times now, people just, you know, get a paragraph letter from a well driller saying, "I've drilled wells in Belgrade and found clean water somewhere." Well, that doesn't really cut it. Um, that doesn't really address the standard in any manner. Um, and certainly isn't applicable to a specific site. Um, the, uh, because again, this is about quality, not quantity. And, uh, so my suggestion was, um, kind of twofold, really. First, for most man-made contaminants like petroleum, uh, hazardous substances, uh, nitrates, um, items of that nature uh, from, you know, abutting land uses or former land uses on the property where the subdivision is proposed. One way to relatively quickly and cheaply figure out if there, there's a reasonable, um, possibility that contaminated water, it, determine whether there may be a risk to the groundwater underneath that site that would be intercepted by drinking water supply wells. Uh, and that is to do what's called in, uh, a phase one environmental site assessment. It's an entirely a record search of publicly available information using the state's GIS system, using federal records, using, um, uh, historical, uh, fire insurance maps, where there were former mills, things of that nature. Et cetera, and, uh, and it would include, you know, the state's mapping of where contaminated groundwater has already been found. And if that finds that, you know, one of those types of, uh, likely contamination sources or possible contamination sources is either on that property or on the abutting properties, then we could have a two-step process where then and only then would we require a hydro geological investigation and not waste the applicant's money on a investigation when there's really no
Right.
good reason, uh, or justification.
And was that one into?
Second part of that.
Yeah.
I mean, we know of one, I, we do, by the way, we do have petroleum contamination sites in Belgrade. We have a, a number of home heating oil tank cases that DEP's cleaned up. Uh, and I use the term cleanup loosely, it's really remediate, and a lot of times replacing their drink, the contaminated drinking water supplies. We had down a Lake Shore Drive gasoline contamination of five wells. Um, and we have a number of others, um, but, a- and then probably some that we don't know about. Um, and then, of course, we have the salt contamination plume that extends from the town and DOT, um, sands, historical sand salt piles. And I'm not really sure what, what the extent of that is, um, because I haven't seen any mapping of it. But we know that there's at least, um, twelve or so wells contaminated. And, um, and so we might be, want to deal with that upfront and, and, you know, specifically uh, saying something to the effect, if you're in this contamination zone or in the map plume of the salt contamination, you have to do a hydro geological investigation to prove that the water is clean. And if it isn't clean, if it isn't, if it doesn't meet standards, then, you know, we either require some kind of treatment that the applicant has to provide. We could, um, or they could, uh, deal with it through some kind of off-site public drinking water supply, if that's feasible. It may not be, I don't know.
Um, I do believe-
Lastly, we end up, you know, denying the permit.
Yeah, I think that-
That's the gist.
Yeah, um, we can include it in this section, but I'm kind of going through, um, the mandatory submissions. I know that we haven't discussed whether we want to separate minor, major and minor, because I had gone through Nick's notes and it seemed that he had wanted to submit it, but we'll return to that, um, later. But I know in the mandatory submissions, that is required. Um, because I, I'm pretty sure in either the final submission, the preliminary submission, because there is a point where if you do not have, if there isn't a public water system and you cannot provide, provide water, there is a requirement, and that's the denial submission. So I, we can put it in ten point two B as well. But I know that as part of the application in the ordinance as it lies out, water quality and drinkable water is part of it. Um, so I don't know if we need to put that in this section, and then my other point would be looking at ten point two B, it does reflect the main rules for water. Um, but it doesn't have a specific standard that we're looking for. So I think that we, if, when I pulled up the drinking water means drinking water guidance rules, and they're very, I, I've looked them before, but I know that they have a lot of, um, anal- analysis and data points that, excuse me, that would be included here. They do have to do a submission in ten point two B. Sorry, I just lost the page scrolling up. Um, do you guys have the page in the bottom left-hand corner?
So, Charles, um, I just want to make sure I'm being clear. Uh, the gist of my concern is that when we get to doing findings of fact and law, we need to find that, you know, this, the subdivision's going to provide potable drinking water. And that'll be based, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, based on the performance standard, meeting the performance standards in article ten.
Right.
Uh, and, uh, that's why I focused on adding some meat to, uh,
Yeah.
B.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just still trying to find the, um, section again. Keep getting scrolled back down to the bottom of the page. I think I got it. Yeah, ten point two B. Um, we could definitely add more, um, language arcs, I think. I mean, I, I personally think that they are there, it just references the main rules related to drinking water, which does include national water standards as well. So we can take those directly and put them into the ordinance. I don't know if that's exactly what you're looking for, or more kind of we find an environmental consultant or see what environmental consultants are looking for. Because I know in your notes, you did say that they were, they do these all the time, so they do have a standard. Um, but if they're look, working off of the federal EPA contamination levels or whatever, I know the main rules related to drinking water do include those, and they do have those standards, so we can, I think you're, uh, forgive me if I'm wrong, but if you're suggesting of adding actual point saying the Belgrade subdivision, the, the planning board will not approve it and deny it if you don't meet these exact standards, then if those standards change for whatever reason, you'd have to go change it in your ordinance. But if you refer to the main rules relating to drinking water, those are continuously updated. And you don't, the ord- the changes don't have to be reflected in the ordinance. Or this could be one of the sections that gets challenged if it doesn't get consistently updated.
I, I do think that the, an applicant needs to be able to demonstrate that, but I was trying to avoid, the only way an applicant can demonstrate to that, to us, planning board, at the time of the application is if they sink monitoring wells and actually test the groundwater. And I was trying to avoid requiring that in all cases. Uh, I was trying to, the, my proposal was to only require that if there's, uh, some evidence that there may be a contamination source on the site of the subdivision itself or on the abutting properties.
Right, so you would want like a two-step, a two-step system, one, that if they, instead of saying you need to provide us with a test, if you can provide us with information saying that it isn't, I just don't know where, how the, or it's like during your fact of finding of facts. So you would, part of the process of finding facts would be say, "Has there ever been a contamination there?" If not, you're good. If yes, do the testing. I'm just trying to figure out what would be the, how, how, how you envision putting it in.
Well, um, I, I mean, again, you know, looking at what I put together, um, you know, I, I, I would see, you know, uh, water quality, um, section where you would have a B one or whatever, uh, requiring us, uh, submission of environmental site assessment for the property in question and, and the abutting properties, and something that's l- language along the lines of if the environmental site assessment indicates a likely source of groundwater contamination, the planning board is to require a hydro geological study, including test wells, to verify or rule out that there indeed is contaminated groundwater where the drinking water supply wells would go. The, but, uh, you know, set, let's set aside the salt, the existing salt contamination plume we have in town for a moment, but that would be sort of the general, you know, baseline, uh, procedure and standard, uh, the standard being when they, if they put in those, have to put in those, if they, the environmental site assessment finds that there's no likely contamination sources, then we can make a finding that in all likelihood, the drinking wa- the groundwater is potable. If, if they find, um, that there is a likely source of contamination and then put in test wells, then we compare those results, water sampling results against the state and federal drinking water standards and make a decision, you know, either it's potable or it isn't.
Right.
Uh, depending on, you know, if there's benzene there, because there was a gasoline spill at one point in time, or whatever the case might be.
Yeah, so I know I'm just, I found this section I was referring to earlier, so we could go back and change it. So in the mandatory submission sections, um, there'd be an indicator, so we'd have to go back and change this too. Um, and it says an indication of the type of water supply systems to be used in the subdivision, so this is, I think, five, two, F on page twenty, and then number three says, "When water is to be supplied by private wells, evidence of adequate groundwater supply and quality shall be submitted by a well driller or a hydro, hydro geologist familiar with the area." So as of right now, that's part of it, and I think that'd be included in it as well.
Yeah.
So I think it's there for you, but it seems like you want to take that out and make it, if there's, so make it an indication type of water supplies seem to be used in subdivision if contaminants could be present. It's, I, right now it's mandatory no matter what, if there hasn't been, um, it's just a site and environmental test to see if there is good water there. Um, do you want to make that optional there? You want to say if there's a possible content, contamin, contaminant? I can't even say that word right now, a possible contamination of the water, then they do the test, and if it, everything seems fine, or if there is no historical contamination of that property or that parcel or abutting parcels, they don't need the test? Because I think it'd be good to have it no matter what, especially if they're subdividing for, I mean, most subdivi- subdivisions in the region aren't, are for, will, do require water, a water supply system, and I don't think Belgrade has a public water supply, so they're all private.
Right, yeah. The only public drinking water supplies we have here in Belgrade are transient ones. You know, restaurants, things of that nature, the town office.
Right.
Ham and lumber.
Yeah, so I think in, the reason why I'm hesitant and I'm totally okay with, um, putting it further in this section, if the planning board does want it to be optional, saying to kind of put, put it there, so this is, your proposal is putting in two layers of finding in fact, which would be one, looking at historical contamination, and then two, if there is historical contamination during the test. And then allowing anyone who passes that, "There's been no contamination here, we checked," um, say they can assume they have potable water.
Right.
So I-
Generally speaking, the assumption, a- and if you just rely on a well driller, they, like everybody else, just assumes you can plunk down a well anywhere in Maine and come up with clean drinking water, and then, and the unfortunate reality increasingly is that's not the case.
Right. So that's why I think putting, requiring that as a baseline submission, um, is strong, and then we can expand upon the water. We can expand upon that here, but I think referring to the main rules relating to drinking water kind of covers that, and also leaves room to say if those rules change, when I, I think they're probably updated. I don't know, every few years, they'll probably take a look at that, last amended twenty sixteen, so. the standards got increased because of, um, a climate plan," or something related to that. Uh, what are other people's thoughts on this? Do we want to kind of expand upon it and make it that two-step system, require an application?
Of there may be contamination, there actually needs to be a hydro geologist, not a well driller. So the whole option of, we want. Something from a well driller or hydro geologist, we are taking that out. We want that first assessment. And if it comes back potential contamination, we need actual hydro geologists. So we're not looking for anything from a well driller to tell us whether the water quality is good.
That's a easy change, so do we wanna put that, so we'll. That those changes seem to be kind of in the preliminary final submission plan. Um do we wanna, do you want me to, or do we want to change ten point two B? To kind of have explain, expand on that system a little bit more, or we can kind of leave the standard as. Our hopes is to have good drinking water and to avoid existing contaminants. Uh we can build in and saying that the process in Belgrade is twofold, where one, we look at the historical data. Um say that historically this parcel that's being subdivided. Has no contaminants and then two, if so. That's when we really wanna reinforce the contamination testing.
The the second way Charles has a uh. Very humane um quality to it, you know, it explains. Average, average Joe, right? Tells our hopes and aspirations and we're not just trying to have people spend money. We're trying to have things in. Uh in place that allows all who live there um in future. And it's have clean drinking water, so. My, I'm leaning towards this, the way you suggested it, that's, I don't know how the other board members feel.
Well, I do think it already has to be a submission change. Especially if we're gonna change the language to move away from well drillers and make sure that. There is a hydro geologist there for that more environmental and. Yeah, there's no further comment, we can move to. Ten point six, but I will give a moment for us to kind of skim through. Um ten point three through ten point five. No, that's a lot, but I'm just going off of George's notes and. Really willing to stop at any point.
Indicate something.
Yes, Mac.
Oh, um, I just wanted to get back to the to the salt uh contamination. I think George raising that is is spot on that we have to address that. That's why there is a moratorium, so. I don't know, I, there is no map, so. I I think in if we, if all we require is that first environmental assessment, it's not gonna come up, right? So don't we have to say something separate about that?
Uh is that addressed to me, Mac? I'm not sure that it would come up in an environmental site assessment, uh I've been un. Able to get into DEP's GIS system to check. Uh I'm not confident that DOT enters data into that, maybe Peter knows, um but um. You know, we do know that um. That's the reason why we have subdivisions included in the moratorium, cause the select board. Was concerned about talking town about a subdivision being proposed somewhere in the. Close proximity or in the plume itself. Now, just because I don't know or haven't seen a map doesn't mean one doesn't exist. I ha- can't believe after three years of studying this, DOT's hydro geologists don't have a map of. Of the extent of the contamination at this point in time. Uh be- cause th- they're in active discussions with the select board about building a public drinking water supply system for the contaminated wells. You know, the whole objective would be though to minimize the towns and. Well, one, ensure any new subdivisions would have salt free water and two would be the not increase the. Liability of the town and and DOT in terms of that drinking water supply system. As I suggested, maybe we could get more information from DOT um and invite them. To give us a presentation on the extent of the contamination and what their findings are, um. I mean, you know, we're just haven't been in the loop and and not necessarily have had to be, but um. Now would be a good time to get smart.
Exactly, so so George, um co- my confidence in DOT's um entering data into DEP's system is low. The I'm thinking they're ma- maintaining their own separate sort of thing. I I I think we should probably revisit this with um uh Anthony. And and or the select board. Because they may be much closer to a resident than we know. About that public drinking water supply and if so, we may have a mechanism in place or or. Uh maybe not in place, but sort of uh carved out to say, well, should this. Thing be happening like you've described, George, we might be able to point to that and tools that they use. And then we could have language in our ordinance that would say, in these cases or in these circumstances. Vicinity of, you know, blah 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 uh is remediated by, you know.
Charles, I I have a question for you, it it, let's assume that DOT has, you know, uh. Map the extent of the contamination, at least up to this point in time. Uh it a- actually may be going in two directions. Uh based on something I heard at a select board meeting, maybe heading from um. Down Route twenty seven from Cemetery Road, which probably doesn't mean anything to you, but from Christie's. Uh towards the depot and it may be heading towards Great Pond as well, because the salt piles were on the groundwater divide, you know.
Right, I know that I did look at this with Gabe Galvin, our environmental planner, he was walking me through this on a map, so.
Uh I guess my question is sort of partly legal, I guess, but can a town in a subdivision ordinance? Take like a defined geographical area. And say because of known salt contamination in our case. Uh can we um. Well, either prohibit new subdivisions or, you know, required. Immediately go into a, probably more likely, immediately go into a hydro geological study. So you know, the the map would be the substitute for the phase one si- site assessment, basically.
Yeah, I think if you had, if that map exists, we can. Definitely just throw it into this ordinance and saying, here is known contamination. And we can have, if we have a map and like a DEP, a main DEP report or a main dot report kind of on that. Putting that in directly referring to it and saying this areas can't be subdivided because you will not. Be able to get potable water, that's fine. The more legal questions would be. Can you specifically say these parcels can't subdivide because of known contamination? I I would say no, again, I'm not a legal source, but. That would be something because you'd be specifically saying these subdivisions. Can't, I guess it's the same thing either way, so maybe it's a complete legal decision. But the best way to say these people would have to get environmental tests right away. Is kind of our, it's I I still see it there already, especially the way we're going to change this, because. When they go to, when you do your fact finding and they go to apply, you're gonna know that parcel was in that area. I think for future planning boards having that contamination map and. Generally speaking, all contamination zones in the town, I'm not too familiar with that. Putting that into this ordinance and saying, having whole sec- not a whole section, an appendix on contamination would be. I think singling out an area might be a little difficult, but putting in that. Fact finding and information is definitely. There, so that'd be a question for Anthony and the town attorney. Which would be if you specifically say these, this area, these parcels, et cetera, cannot subdivide without a hydro geologist. Or knowing well beforehand that they can't get potable water, then they can't. I would say that the ordinance wouldn't allow those applicants to subdivide. I am curious to see if they do have a map available for the contamination zone. Seems like you guys kind of expect it or would expect it up to this point. So that's definitely something we can refer to at a later date and maybe revisit this when we have more information.
Sounds great, I I guess I would just offer this, if DOT is, you know, getting closer to. Uh making an agreement with Belgrade, I can't imagine they'd be doing it without a map.
Right, yeah.
Don't see it.
Meaning, even I would assume even if they don't say here's a map of it, they can say this is where they found contaminants and. Potentially in a separate project, you the town or the state would put in a map, but I think having a map would be important.
I would think so, I think their lawyers would be all over it, you know, they'd wanna protect their interests, so. Anyway.
Any final thoughts on the water? I think we do, the changes we suggested outside of the um contamination we just discussed. I think those changes will be good and I'll make sure to reflect those, kind of any changes related to the water quality. Um just before I do make changes in the future for this section, are we okay with making? Changing the requirements, the submission requirements preliminary. The preliminary is more of a fact finding of a historical contamination and the final submission. If there is that historical contamination would require a hydro geologist.
Yes. Uh how are the board members feel? Mac is nodding, George, yeah, thumbs up. Pete, Craig. Rich, yeah, like, okay. Great.
Alright, so if we don't have anything further to talk about this, um we will move to ten point six. But before that, I do wanna give a chance to talk about section ten point three, ten point four and ten point five. So if you guys look at those and have had any questions about this or when you were reviewing it, you saw anything, if not.
No, nothing substantive, um I would. I'm looking at the um. The subdivision ordinance on page thirty. Uh ten dot five required improvements, A. Um go to one, this is minor, it's a spelling thing, it's quickly, but it's not the right word. So so Charles, you with me?
Um in the monument section?
Yep, so all subdivision boundary corners and angle points as well. And the next word should be just as.
And which number is this? Oh, what was that?
You look, I'm I'm in one.
The stone or precast concrete?
Yeah, page thirty, ten five A monuments, uh it says. All subdivision boundaries, corners and angle points as well, it says ass, all lot boundary corners. At least on mine it does.
It's on mine.
It's very minor, so if you, you don't spend much time.
Yeah, I'll make note of that and you said in ten point, in ten one. D one.
Uh Charles, I. Yeah, I'll 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 email it to you or something.
Perfect, yeah, sorry.
We can go on.
Uh alright, so we'll just jump down to ten six, I think the other ones in between are pretty standard. I don't think there's too much there. Uh mainly just kind of talking about towns, um solid waste facility or private solid waste. Ten and ten point six, George, I, you know, I think you've had a few comments on this whole section. And a lot of it did relate with the comp plan. So we'll look at. A two, preservation, natural beauty and two. George would wanted to specifically outline these designated growth areas. Which I had not checked in back with your comp plan, I know most comp plans now are including these designated growth zones. We can choose, we can specifically say which growth zones as they're labeled in. Um the comp plant, we can, I can go back and just pull that from your comp plan and put them in just. More consistently and then we'll reflect that in A three as well. George, is that, that's a simple fix you were thinking of, just making sure it really pulls from the comp plan there? Alright, easy enough. And then B, we'll scroll down just a little bit onto the next page, B one. Um and the question is, should we discuss whether we should apply this center to the identified critical resource conservation districts? And is this one of those, George? I wasn't sure if there was more of a deeper conversation here or it's kind of similar to the comp plan. Um do you wanna specifically outline all of the environment protected areas, shoreline zones? Um do we wanna go further into that here?
Well, I I just highlighted it, cause I thought we should discuss it, the uh, cause it there's sort of a. It it's similar to um what we just discussed where, you know, there's a disconnect. Between the language used in the model ordinance and and the language or the labels used in in our um. Comprehensive plan. But also um whether or not. We really want to um. Consider all those areas that aren't labeled for growth, uh a, you know, like a a green belt. Or open space area. And and again, you know, there's a, it isn't a, uh actually doesn't actually show up in the recommendations of the comp plan. But there's a general goal in the text of the plan of to. Keep the lakes within their phosphorus budget of maintaining sixty percent of the current open space. In open space. And and that's just, that's the reason why I bring it up.
Yeah, cause I know if. So the way it's written in the model ordinance from my reading of it. Is that if a piece of it is in a protected land, whether designated by the state or the town. They'd have to develop a plan, do we wanna say what would be, what would be required? Kind of in that submission or like the specific element saying that. For example, the lakes keep maintaining sixty percent of the open space around it. Um would that be things we wanted to include in this subdivision ordinance more specifically?
I'm just a little concerned that it, well, if you look at the the map of the different zones. Associated with the comprehensive plan. The. Non-growth areas, if you will, is an extensive part of town. And so to have a requirement saying in the in this ordinance reserving it all for open space, I I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think what would be better is to change open space. Does the narrative desert by the comp, we can just remove one or kind of take the same definition, I think we should reme- I think open space or greenbelt is just kind of an empty vague turn. I don't know if you're, does the comp plan have an open space or greenbelt specifically?
No.
Then we can, I think we can just remove B one and then section B two as it is right now is kind of what we're looking at anyway. If we have the growth areas in A two, A one, we have the growth areas and the other on the land use map would be the protected area, so we can just make sure we talk about those retention of open spaces. I would be worried though, if at a future date, if there was a kind of a new open space or greenbelt added, say you guys revisited the comp plan in ten fifteen years. Or when I don't know when you guys most recently did it, but if you did find open space or a greenbelt. I guess that'd be a change of just including the subdivision ordinance. I don't want to take it out without considering what the impacts would be, if that makes sense. I agree that it, right now, it doesn't really do anything and it could be an issue. But if the comp plan doesn't designate it or doesn't currently designate it doesn't mean that it won't be necessary, if you understand what I'm saying.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I would just be, I think right now, I don't think there is an issue if the comp plan doesn't designate anything as open space or greenbelt. I can look, kind of see what the complant says and if it says something like anything that isn't in the growth area is an open space or greenbelt, that would be a concern. But I don't think there's any harm in just removing it.
Okay, I I understand what you're saying, yeah. No, it it doesn't, it it it, you know, for example, it doesn't, there's a one category called conservation lands. But they're primarily lands that are already owned by inland fish and wildlife or the land trust.
Right. I can kind of go back through the company and get more kind of translate that, what their definition or what the comp plan is saying.
Yeah.
So to take, just look at honestly, just take the language out of the land use map. And kind of go through all of section six, because I think a lot of the I think a lot of section six and a lot of your notes kind of were kind of making sure that it's in line with the comp plan.
Yeah, that that's the gist of what I was trying to get to.
Right. Yeah, I'm looking at even in beyond B. I don't want to skip over your other notes, but I think a lot of these are just look at the comp plan, make sure it's here in this section. But I think for B one and B two, that's more that's, I think that's more accurate. And then for B two, you had a question, should we require project review by the Critical Natural Areas Program and Department of Ag of service they will provide?
Yeah, I mean, they offer project reviews for developers free of charge, as you probably know, and and you know, we have elsewhere a similar kind of requirement that in efficient wildlife regional biologist review. And it seemed to me we'd be not not complete if we didn't include some of the critical natural areas. Some are, there's some overlap, but there's also some that are uniquely based that are not wildlife management, wildlife habitat areas, but you know, their vernal pools or their you know, unique botanical areas and that kind of thing, one of which I know we have in Belgrade.
Right. Yeah, I can kind of just look into this whole, look into one and two to make sure that it is, because looking at B three, that's kind of what we're looking for, yeah, Mac.
Well, I think in B two would just be if it's in an area, then instead of saying the applicant would include appropriate measures for how it's, why it's designated such or whatever, you would just say if it's in that area you need to provide a review by the Critical Natural Areas Program. Right?
Right, like, just like if the subdivision included a deer yard or something like that.
Right.
Yeah. I think just using that. Because I think the first one is looking at open space or B one is looking at open space or like designated public area. Two is protected and conserved environmental lands and three is the National Register of Historic Places and the Maine Historic Preservation Commission. So just making sure all three of those cover all, if that makes sense, making sure that they're all. I think that's why they're there for, and we can instead of saying the plan shall indicate appropriate measures for the preservation. Do we just want to say, just give us or give the give the planning board or give whoever the review?
Yeah, your application would have to include the review by the Natural Areas Program.
Do we want to specifically say that? Do we want to expand upon the unique natural area by the comp plan or the main natural areas pro protect main natural areas program? Because is there anything that that does not include that could affect Belgrade?
I would think one of those, both of those would cover it.
Right.
I mean, what's in the comp plan or what was mapped in the comp plan basically is from the Natural Areas Program.
Right.
For example, we have a series of kettle hole ponds and associated bogs, those are been mapped by the Natural Areas Program.
Right. And then we'll, so yeah, I'll just go through the complaint and make note of that and see if we can get a good change there for that. For four, this seemed to be is this something, George, you were thinking that it should be removed before because there the sufficient undeveloped land?
I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear you.
Oh, sorry. Did you want to, for section B four? Do we just want to say if it is under ten acres total area? Kind of just moving to the next, I'm, this is one of your notes I was a little confused of.
I was just suggesting that we keep basically the the current, the standard that we use now, which is to retain, i- if a subdivision is greater than ten acres in total area, ten percent of the total area be set aside for open space.
Yeah. Alright, that's easy enough. So to kind of make it no, no more stranger than it needs to be. And we'll keep that the way it currently is. Well, and B five, what were your concerns on B five? Subdivision with an average density of more than three dwelling units per acre shall provide no less than fifty percent of the open space as usable open space to be improved for ball fields, playgrounds or other similar recreation facilities.
I I just you know, I I didn't know what to make of that, basically is what it came down to. I mean, there's nothing in the comprehensive plan that talks about, you know, providing recreational facilities at subdivisions or other than, you know, well, it it's silent on that subject. And so I wasn't quite sure what to make of that. Maybe this falls in the same category. You mentioned before, because the comp plan's silent, it, this is becomes basically irrelevant and something you skip over. On the course of reviewing a subdivision, it's just since it's there, you know, people tend to focus on it.
Yeah, no, I think it's good to consider now, even if the end result is just leaving it in there kind of as a piece that will probably never be referenced, but on the off chance that it is. I think this is more of just one of those suggestions that if you're, if you are having a lot of dwelling units then you need to provide recreation because that could be an impact on local playgrounds, local parks. Just making sure that if you are substantially increasing, not substantially, but if you are increasing the population from anywhere from six to fifteen, then you do consider that. I I I think it's one of those things that we can take it out. It's a little bit different because it's a little bit more specific to I feel like that's more cater for more urban population dense communities.
Right.
I feel like in a more comparatively, or like a town like Belgrade, that's not, it's not too necessary.
Yeah, I mean, if we were Augusta or, you know, Cape Elizabeth or whatever, be a different story.
Yeah, definitely. And I think even average density of more than three dwelling units, I think that's more looking at larger projects anyway. So I think that's just the minimum requirement, so we can strike that. Because I think if there was a large proposal, there would be, that would be something else. So we can strike that. Are we okay with striking that? Nice, perfect. And then B seven, you want to say reserved open, add just land trust to that as well?
Right.
Is there any other space or you did kid to the municipality land trust? Any other? Anything else that could be included, something from the comp plan, or do you think municipality and land trust? Do you want to? Is there anything else to add in the planning board's eye?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, easy enough. Moving down a little bit further in this section, so C, protection of significant wildlife habitat. We can, George, we, I guess we could rename this section to value plant and animal habitat. Does, I would say that the the comp plan, how how would the comp plan reference significant wildlife habitat?
There's language, fairly general language and recommendations that, you know, that I I I honestly can't recall now if it's uses the terminology significant wildlife habitat. But it it references that the town should use beginning with habitat mapping and the terminology that they use is high value plant and animal habitat.
All, I think that's something that I'll look at to see what the complant says, but it seems protection of high value plant and animal seems. Good, I'm just curious if this section, as it stands right now, includes anything not wildlife, but if it's their habitat, then that's totally fine, that takes in a lot of, a lot of it. Yeah, we can change that. So you would want it to be protection of high value plant and animal habitat?
Yeah, just to be consistent with the mapping that we would actually utilize to make the, those determinations.
Yeah. Cool, easy, moving down. See one, just add significant vernal pools, can do.
Again, it's it's just to be consistent with inefficient wireless mapping.
Yeah. Pause, amend language, be consistent. So a lot of this is just making sure that the, everything's being reflected. For clarity, oh, just generally for clarity sake.
Right.
Yeah, right. I think these are all non-significant changes, so we can keep. And I'll do, I'll give a closer to the se- this section or chapter ten or article ten as well. Just to make sure that there is that consistency through it, that's not just saying something general vague that can be saying, well, let's not protect it according to this ordinance. D two, moving into D, that's a simple change. Add D restrictions as suggested by explanatory commentary. Oh, I skipped over, did I skip over C? No, C three. I didn't, okay. Yeah, E three, this was another one that I, I'm going down a little bit on page forty. Requirement that open space be shown on final plan needs to be added to the application submission requirement section of this ordinance as well, otherwise will be we just, do you want that directly added to the submission? Or is that something you want to expand upon in this section?
Well, my suggestion was that it it'd be part of the submissions, because I I know in our existing ordinance, we've got places where, you know, you go to the standards and there's discussion about something, but we don't, we never get around to in the application requirements to actually requiring the information to be able to make a finding about that.
Right. Do you want that in, would that be a preliminary or final submission plan or both?
I I don't think it matters as far as I'm concerned, I would defer to others.
Both can work, right?
Can work, yeah, I don't see why not. I think if you do, because if you do require a change between the first time you see it and the second time you see it then the open space is probably something that they're going to change, because that's usually the room to work with. So making sure that's consistent there, cool. And Peter, I know that, I don't know how much time you want to, you have a lot for this meeting, so please. I don't want to, I really don't want to end off in the middle of a section, like a line in between, so cut me off when you think.
Yeah, I was, I was just looking at the time, I think we've been on this for an hour, I think, or nearly so.
Yeah, about an hour.
Yeah, so Kate, to not end in the middle and try to complete something, that'd be great. But I know we've got Adam Gardner next, I want to make sure we can
Yeah.
Give him time. Hey, Mac?
I I have two comments. I do want to backtrack a little bit.
Of course.
Have a comment, but in terms of the overall I guess I would like to keep going on this and at least finish Georgia's, you know, ten and eleven comments. I know it's over an hour, but we're in December and if we don't get through this you know, an hour every time isn't going to do much. And Gary already said, our second meeting in January, we can't do this. So I don't think we're going to do this at all in January. Because I doubt we're going to do it the first meeting in January.
I was also going to suggest, since a lot of these changes that George and I are discussing, don't ultimately I don't think they really require full conversation until we have them all figured out. So I think for the next time we address this, especially if we're only going to be talking about this for one hour in January. George, I think we, me, you and Peter should find sometime just to go through the whole thing and provide the comments, so we can make these conversations just a little, if that's okay with the planning board, I'm just suggesting that. Just to really get, make sure that this document is finished and we can put all those changes go through each change rather than finding spending time for each solution. Obviously, that's what you guys want indicated last time, that you want to make sure that this was a whole planning board conversation. But in the interest of time, I think that might be a a good expedited process, if that. That's just, that would be my suggestion. Now, Peter, you're still muted.
You obviously, you know my thoughts because I've written them down.
Right.
I'm willing to do that, so let's, let's go for it, let's keep going.
Cool, alright.
Just to to backtrack a little bit, if you go to C three, George's comments. Just to, to backtrack a little bit, if you go to C three, George's comments. It says for. Applicant must consult with Maine, IF and W and provide their written comments. And recommendations for mitigation measures, if any, to the board. Right?
Right.
So I'm just looking for consistency. So here we're saying, if you consult this state agency on this particular issue. We want their written comments and the recommendations for mitigation measures. So if we tell somebody like we did previously for.
The water.
For the water quality to consult the state agency. You know, with that environmental, we want the written comments and recommendations for mitigation measures. If we tell somebody to consult the state historic. Board, we want their written comments and recommendation, you know. Whatever language we use, I just wanna make sure it's the same language every time we tell them.
Right, yeah, I'll make, I just made a note of the consistency, um, especially working with another body.
Right.
Yeah. And that's not even only for this section, that's for everything, making sure that these reflect, are reflected in the submissions as well. Um, kind of related to the point we just talked about, um, in E three. That afterwards, I'll make sure I go through all this and saying if, if X and you can need a report, that's in the. Some, somewhere in the submission, so that they know the planning board is looking for that and that it's expected of them. So we'll go down to. E three and E four are the same, uh, ten, seven, so that's a little bit further down. The conformance with zoning ordinance and other land use ordinances. And built in Belgrade minimum lot size ordinance. Um, that would be, I think that's also a larger conversation that we might wanna have. Kind of a more thematic, do we wanna have the septi, um. Actually, that doesn't matter, just add the minimum lot size ordinance, yeah, that's. Yeah, I don't know where I was going with that, but that, yes, noted, I had that. What was that?
I'll be right back, carry on.
Okay. So ten, seven, simple change. Eight, section eight, financial and technical capacity. I, I, yeah, I agree. I think it can. Be moved, I don't think it. I think for, it just interrupts George, the. The flow of requirements, so that can be moved later.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, just to me, it just seemed a little out of place, but you know, um.
Yeah.
It, it's not the end of the world, but, uh, more substantive thing is how, how are we supposed to measure whether they have adequate financial capacity?
Is that something the town requires now? Is there an issue with? Um, the way you guys are obtaining financial capacity, or are you even asking for it?
I, I believe the existing ordinance does require it, but it doesn't, it, it also doesn't say how do you, how do you measure it? Which. Is the, also the case here within the model ordinance, I didn't see where.
Yeah, this section doesn't talk about financial capacity at all. Oh, I, I just was looking at technical pass, capacities, right? Yeah, I mean, that could be something that we put in the definitions, adequate financial resources. It's either, and I would either envision that in, expanded upon in this section or just more of a definition. I'm not familiar with a, like a common. What's the word I'm looking for, a?
I.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm interested in Craig's opinion on this. You, Craig, you've built stuff, um, what? I do think it's, just having the language there, how are we supposed to measure it, but at the same time? You know, what makes sense, Craig?
Well, I'm not really for that at all, um, it's, uh, so if that language is in there, I wouldn't be able to build the house you're in. And, um, you know, so just to do a subdivision on someone's financial status. You're eliminating someone like me trying to make a living and building a status, you know? So as long as all the other requirements are met about erosion control and all the other stuff, why the hell do we need this?
I, I kinda agree with that, Craig. Especially in a place like Belgrade where big stuff isn't happening and, and you are building on relationships. And you are building. You know, you're able to do things because of your relationships, which isn't on paper. So whatever we require, I just don't think. Anyway, I, I agree with Craig.
Uh, Pete.
Pete's still not back.
Is there only one Pete on the planning board?
Peter Sargent, you're muted.
Yeah, that's what I was, I don't, I didn't wanna.
You're muted, Pete, if, if you wanna talk.
I can't see if his mouth is moving either.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, Charles, I had a question for you, um. In your experience with, uh, other towns, when they're subdivisions. How do they address the definition of the financial capacity of a developer? For, take some example, some of the, uh, towns just south of us, you know, a little more. How about Wells, Town of Wells, those kinda towns down there by the, by the, the ocean?
Right.
How do, how, how do they address that?
I'm not, I can't speak for those other towns, um, especially in Southern Maine.
Okay.
And I think that's something I can look into for sure. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to think of. In the other subdivision, just applications, people who have recently done it. Um, I don't know if they've had this section. Um, or the, the strong reasoning behind it. So I do agree with Craig. Um, that it can be limiting, especially when you're asking for. All of that, um.
You know, what, what, what I'm thinking of, um, in other financial matters, uh, what, what I, uh. A town could do is they go to, the, the, ask the developer to, uh, get. A, a bond, performance bond. Uh, from an insurance company, basically. Uh, that's one, one way to go, go. So I put, that's for commercial, a lot of commercial stuff, you know, commercial jobs, but, so. That's why I started asking the question, you know, some of your more. Sophisticated towns, how do they handle it?
Yeah, I can't, I'm not.
Be good guidance to start with, I think.
Yeah, we can look at that, um, we can revisit it and with the understanding that it may not be necessary to fully include.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, Craig.
Plain blank, if that wording was in there, that subdivision I did in North Bay Estates, baby dog. Wouldn't happen because it was my father and I doing it, um. You know, he took out a loan for the infrastructure, line of credit. And I had a loan, a small loan to build the first house and him and lumberhead to hold the material for me. And it still turned out to be a nice subdivision. Uh, with quality homes in it, so you're limiting somebody, you're just making big builders come in with all this.
Right.
Big money and you're taking away the small businessman out of Belgrade.
Right, and I think the intention of this is to make sure that the board doesn't, or the town doesn't approve a subdivision. And then it can't be finished. I think that's the concern of this, but I think the, uh, the flip side of that is that does. Do what you're saying.
And I went through two thousand eight.
Yeah, I, I, I think whatever language we were to come up with, I agree with, with limit. Either Craig or some, s- some other example, you know, whatever language we came up with. Maybe it would allow Craig to work, but it wouldn't allow somebody else to work, you know, like, I don't think we can come up with a good solution. I think what Pete said is true. The real issue is for big commercial projects, they take out a bond for like. Solar or wind farms, you know, that the wind farm can come down if it runs out of money. But for subdivisions here in Belgrade, I think this is just totally unnecessary. And we should just eliminate it altogether.
Charles, I, I just wanted to remind, uh, well, point out that. We have to have something, if for no other reason regarding financial and technical capacity. Because it's in, it's one of the review criteria in state law. In title thirty A.
Yeah.
So then it becomes, if we have to have it, it isn't the option to eliminate it. Then the question, the only question I'm raising is how do we measure it? I mean, I, I'm sympathetic to Craig, I, I wouldn't wanna see us, us have a, um. Criteria here or standard here that basically eliminate, only allows for the, you know, the big. Developers to be working in Belgrade.
I think if we were going to keep it in some capacity, we would have to move, um, the applicant shall have adequate financial resources to construct the total development. That's the main, that's the primary limiting factor in this paragraph. I can look for others, but I, I'm curious if we just remove that final part of that sentence where it says, um. The applicant shall have adequate, adequate financial resources to construct a total development. Or we can have like an or, um, kind of, I don't know what would best encapsulate everything else. Saying, or they express a strong will to complete the project without having the full budget afterward. I don't know if that's. Strong legal language, um. And it's hard to build that off of just like, what, what, what language would include? Ever, everyone's unique experiences without striking this is kind of a difficult line to balance.
So what's, what's considered complete and? And what's the difference as far as complete or not to the town, as long as the, as long as, uh, there's no erosion or anything going into the lakes. I don't wanna see what, what businesses it is to the town.
Yeah, I think even the final section, now that I'm looking at it, and making the above determination that board shall consider the proposed timeframe and construction. If people are building it themselves, it might take them multiple years, if it's like a second property or. A side project, so I think. I'm gonna have to spend some time looking at that and kind of doing more research on other subdivision ordinances. And I'll report, I think that's something I wa, I'd feel more comfortable reporting back. Uh, cuz I think that's. I think we're, we have good comments on it. Um, and then the technical capacity section is slightly different, I think. I think there was not as much issue with that. Actually, yeah, it says retain qualified construction. This really limits. The individual owner or subdivider from building on it.
Is it?
So I just, so I just, I just looked up, uh, the criteria in state law thirty eight. And it just says the subdivider has adequate financial and technical capacity to meet the standards of this section, period. Can't we just put that, leave it? It sounds vague. I understand, George, it doesn't really get to your. Point about, you know, how do we measure that? But I think the point here is. We don't wanna measure it because however we measure it, it's gonna eliminate people that we wanna, don't wanna eliminate. So let's quote what the state requires us to put in, but nothing else, because anything else would just limit our ability.
Can I respond to that, uh, a little bit? If we go forward with a, uh, a financial analysis type of thing, you know, we're gonna end up being like a banker. You're gonna have to have a staff of people on, on this board, know how to do it. And so it becomes over burdensome from the town's perspective as, as the, as the planning board, okay? So keep that in mind. So having said that, um. I'm glad, I'm glad you did look that up, Mac, because it kinda clarifies a few things here, what the state does say. And we could run with what, and I think your suggestion here to follow what the state does, just put it in a language in our ordinance. And, and go with that, so I just, that's my thought.
I think there is one piece real quick that we might wanna keep, and that's the final part of E, of, um. B of B two. Which is the existence of violation of previous approvals granted to the applicant. I think that'd be, I don't think that's alone in this section, but that's something that could be, if we do remove it. If somebody does have even a handful of violations, even one or two violations. It, I, I just would wanna make sure that that's included in other sections or that's reflected somewhere else in the document.
Charles, if, if we went in the direction that Ma- Mac was suggesting, where we just go. Kinda with a standard that's unmeasurable, uh, then, uh, I would suggest. Um, in the application requirements earlier in the ordinance. We add language that makes it clear that when people are hiring engineers or hydrogeologists. Or soil scientists, that they meet the requirement, the, the existing requirements in state law, instead, state regulation. That they're a main certified hydrogeologist and they're a main professional engineer, et cetera. So, you know, not anybody, you know, that claims, uh, they got their education on the back of the matchbox. Box can, uh, claim to be a hydrogeologist.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then just kind of going back to the initial part, we can, I can see if we can find a better place for this section. Um, cuz it does kind of chop up a bunch of environmental. Things, but it's more of a final requirement. That's why I think it's in this section. Cuz when you start going to section nine, ten and eleven, it's less specific requirements, if that makes sense. Um, it's more of a. General. Standards and, unless you would think it should be at the end of article ten, of, yeah, of article ten. Um, I'll just, I'll look at that and make, I'll make, I made a note of it just to kind of see if there's a better spot for it, so we'll come back to that. Ten. We're on nine, so ten, ten. Oh, no, we were on eight, now we're on nine, uh, impact on groundwater quality or quantity. Uh, I think this is another one of those, instead of saying a hydro, a hydro geological assessment is submitted. Kind of what we just spoke about, making sure that we have the appropriate language in there. That reflects a specific standard. Um, is there one that you listed to, like the USGS or the Department of Environmental Protection? We can include both, or we can say just one of them. I can look at the main Department of Environmental Protection standards. I would assume they would have. They would include the USGS standards as well in there.
Yeah, I, I, um, this is not an area I, I know much about at all. I, I just. I mean, the goal or objective of this whole, um, subsection is to ensure that the. Subsurface wastewater systems won't contaminate the wells within the subdivision, or at least that, I think I'm interpreting that correctly. And, um. And, you know, it. Requires a hydro geological investigation to do that. If, if it seemed to me that, um, there may be, um. Existing standardized protocols either at the state or national level for doing that, and if so. Um, it would be good guidance to applicants and their consultants. If we could cite those, tha- tha- that was my only suggestion. I, I don't. Um, the existing ordinance, our existing ordinance uses an out of date, um. Method of predicting or estimating nitrate concentrations that the main geological survey came up with. In the nineteen seventies, uh, it, it's severely out of date and probably. Should be questioned severely, um, in terms of its technical va- validity, um. And this seems to be, try to come up with a substitute for that, but. I, I just don't know what to make of the language in the model ordinance in terms of, if we had an application, what would we tell the applicant they needed to submit and?
Right. Yeah, I'm trying to think of the intention of the whole section, like looking at it in the whole section. And I do think it'd be, it's a simple thing, just include those standards. It's, it could be like what we talked about earlier, if we do have, if there is something similar to the main drinking water rules. That we can kind of just broadly refer to for groundwater quality, cause they can do a bunch of tests and they could just not test. The contaminant or X, Y, and Z, and just like, well, all the tests came back positive that you provided with us. Um, so I can find a standard for sure. Would that, you think that would, um, cover? Just including a standard would make that a solid set, a more solid section?
Um, yeah, it, it would, um. I mean, maybe the problem is my ignorance on how, I, I, I guess. This kinda is similar to my concern earlier, is it really necessary? To require, I mean, if I read this correctly, a hydro geological investigation would be required of every subdivision that comes before us. Uh, to determine whether or not this wastewater systems would, um. Pose a threat to the wells in the subdivision and I, I, um. I guess I'm questioning whether that should be in a board, across the board requirement.
Right.
And whether, or whether we could come up with a way to refine that so that it was really only. Required when it was really necessary, for example, in a subdivision that was quite compact and. On poor soils or whatever.
Right. Yeah, I'm thinking that. I'm kind of curious, so if we're saying that you must get a hydrogeologic assessment. If there's a contamination for whatever other reason. It needs, that would need to meet the standards that's requiring it. And then this nine, nine A one is saying when that is submitted because of a separate requirement needs to include this as well. That's kind of just saying that if they, when, when that is, when a hydro geological assessment is triggered. Then this is the information that you would need. It might not be relevant. But it's still there. So I would say that if we do kind of shorten this section. I think the reason why is that this is the information that directly impacts groundwater quality. And it's a little bit separate from drinking water, just kind of think of the larger ecosystem there. So that's why if you are doing it, maybe it's just to, I'm trying to think, I'm not trying to defend the state's model, um, model ordinance, I'm kind of trying to figure out. Why exactly this would be, why this is important to keep. And I think that if you are looking at hydro geological assessments and you're saying, if you can only prove that it's good drinking water, that might not. Uncover a larger extent of groundwater contamination or groundwater quality. That a development, even a minor development could impact.
Well, and maybe I have the wrong end of the stick here, because I was focusing on little paragraph, little F, paragraph, little F where. Um, it, it's, um. The focus again is on, do would the subsurface wastewater disposal systems pose a risk to the wells? Um, and, but the, the whole section is more of, how do you do a hydro geological investigation? Um, so, uh, maybe I'm just confused about it, but. How this fits into the bigger picture.
Yeah, I think this is just saying that when there is, this information will also be provided. Cause like especially for that section that shows any subsurface, subsurface wastewater disposal systems. Um, within the boundary, I think that's just looking at will that affect of the abutting properties. So I think it's one of those things where in the large, when you specifically look at what you want from it. It might be a little unnecessary, but when you do request that, that information will just be provided. So there are some things that which may not be specifically necessary for. Extra information, but I think all this information is, can still be relevant in some capacity.
So then. I'm not getting there. It should be all, so if this. Board decides just to put that on one person and not the other, I mean. That's, so that's just a board choice and not written in the ordinance. I mean, because we have laws in place already for septic systems and wells and, and everything else that are perfectly fine. It's gotta pass a soil test to be subdivided. You need those test pits on your plans. You need, you know, and you can't be within a hundred feet of that with a well, and, you know. I'm not getting what this is all about, I guess.
I think this is just, this isn't saying, this isn't adding any requirements. Um, to the ordinance is just saying that this information shall be provided in addition when there is a hydro geologic assessment. So there's no, there's nothing in this outside of requiring that information. It's not saying. Um, you need to add anything specific, it's just saying for the hydro geologic assessments. This information, the, the assessment shall contain at least the following information. So if that's information that the board feels isn't relevant in a subdivision, I'm just curious, I'm just. Kind of like what I said before, just because it's, you're asking for, and you can't think of a situation where it might be, be relevant, doesn't mean you should. Doesn't mean it like shouldn't be there. This is just saying hydro, hydro geologic assessments. Um, require this information in addition to whatever else they're looking for, whether it be for potable drinking water. Um, but it's one of those things where. You would, you would be saying, if you're asking a hydro geologic, if you are asking a hydrogeologist for a report. Um, you're kind of, if you remove this section, you're saying, we're asking you for a report, put out any information. So this would be an opportunity to say, what does the board want in these assessments? Whether it is to making sure that there is potable drinking water or anything else, because if you say this, we strike. Um, nine A one and all of those requirements, then. You're just saying, it doesn't really give a. Foundation for the hydro geological assessment.
Uh, Charles, Charles, uh, I got a question and also probably for the board, maybe George too. Um, the, the hyd- a certified hydro geologist. When, when that person does the task, does he take in consideration? The, the nitrate, nitrate modeling, et cetera, we're talking about, or he doesn't, I mean. When someone, so you understand what my question is? That the hyd- the hydro, hydro geologist, certified hydro geologist does the study. Does he take in consideration what we're just talking about or he doesn't? I mean, what's?
According to the section, he would have to. Any geological assessment. For the subdivision would require an analysis of the nitrate levels, of the nitrogen concentrations.
So, so if, if we have, if we require, if we require the hydro geologist to be certified, right? He does a certified opinion. He covers, then that's all this we're talking about is covered in, in the opinion, right?
I don't think you could guarantee that, George, I'll let you speak.
Yeah. It, it, um, Pete, the, uh, you can't make that assumption that. Hydro geological investigations are focused on, at what you perceive is the problem, so. If, for example, somebody's doing a hydro geological investigation like we described earlier to determine whether there's manmade pollution on site. Um, that will dictate a certain methodology and approach that they'll take. If, if it, um, if the objective is to. Project or estimate nitrate concentrations based on the contribution of. Subsurface wastewater disposal systems, that's a different methodology, and so it'll be approached differently. Um.
So. Okay, alright, alright, so just kind of following along with that, what you're talking about, are you suggesting that? The high geologist, you know, hydro geologist, uh. We're gonna tell them what, what we want specifically, what we're just talking about here, nitrate modeling plus. Doing the, the septic system, you know, test pits and all that stuff. Are we, are we, are we gonna go that way or are we gonna?
I think that's a good question and, and I think you said it more succinctly than I did, um, the, um. Uh, because, you know, reading this whole section over again, it, it almost seems out of place. In, in one hand, it's a. Describes the methodology. For how to conduct a hydro geological investigation if the board somewhere else in the ordinance should happen to require one. But yet also includes a requirement for a, um. Uh, that you just pointed out, uh, projections of post-development nitrate nitrogen, uh, concentrations in the groundwater.
Okay, so, you know, one thing, you know, I'm asking maybe, but maybe Charles could do some research, again. Take a look at some of these towns. What are the, how are they handling it in their ordinance? Uh, you know, we could, we could, we get a better feel for it. You know, we don't know, you know, we, we're, I, I, we, I think we're trying to re- reinvent the wheel here to, to a certain extent. Because we're not the only town that's gone through sub, subdivision reviews, so there, I'm sure they got the same, had the same question, so. Maybe some other towns out there, they have, have addressed it, again. You know, if Charles is up to it, to, to a quick review, some of these lakefront property towns. Like, you know, in Carvisi, Damascada, uh, or south here a little bit, you know, that big, big, big lake and then, or down by, um. Um. Sabagwe area, you know, they got lakes down there, so. It'll take some research and do we wanna pay Charles to do that, to cover this subject matter, or do we wanna reinvent the wheel? You know, I'm just, just throwing that out for an approach.
Yeah, I think I can, I can definitely look into hydro geological assessments because. What information also might just be saying that. We, if there is a case where. We, what, what information is needed in a hydro geological assessment, because I think this section is kind of saying that. It kind of covers a broad spectrum, cause you might not need, um, a post-development nitrate concentration prediction. But that could just be, that might be relevant in a case, so it might be even better to say. When there is, when the board does ask for a hydro geological assessment, they can ask for these standards as well. Um, and just don't limit, not limiting the standards, but kind of saying the board will determine what is in the hydrological. Assessment, that leaves it open. Um, the only problem is that, that requires the board to know what to ask for. Um, I think the, having these minimum standards in there gives the board kind of some room. To work off of saying that we want the hydro geological assessment. Um, so it could be a moment in time where you say, here's what, here are the common. Issues in Belgrade and we can put those in there instead of just saying these six. Standards that we're asking for in addition, at a baseline, um. And it depends how we use hydro, I think we can come, this is something we should revisit because it depends how hydro geological assessments are used. In the rest of the ordinance as well, especially because we just talked about changing it a little bit, especially when it came to dragon, um, drinking water. If that's okay, but I'll, I'll definitely look into that more, um, and we can. And we can kind of move on. Um, I was looking ahead ten, eleven. Um. To answer your question, George, is the Armicorn nineteen eighty seven manual cited now out of date? I don't know. Um, I'll look into that. If yes, I'll, if it is out of date, I'll update that. Uh, and this is kind of related to our previous conversation, related to. Just what the consistency, saying what standards should be. The identification of freshwater, wetlands, river streams or brooks, just take that from the comp plan and other information that we're looking to. Reflect and making sure that, that. Whatever standards, cause it might just be the nineteen eighty seven Corps of Engineers Wetland delineation manual. But there's probably others that have been recreated since, that should be included in this, and I'm just thinking of. Like this, all the work that's been done related to stream crossings, um, so there's definitely a lot of data there that can be. Used, cause I think the nineteen eighty seven manual shouldn't be the only freshwater standard that we use, and I assume that. Maybe inland, inland wetlands and fisheries would have stronger standards or more complete.
Yeah, in other ordinances, particularly our commercial development review ordinance, we rely on the national wetlands inventory.
Yeah.
That also seems to be what most developers and consultants for developers.
Yeah.
Why, why to.
Yeah, I'll definitely make sure, look into that, um. Yeah, and this is section twelve, um. We can, will remove C, I don't think that'll ever be relevant to Belgrade. Uh, that, that was also your suggestion, George, um, for B, why not simply require a submission of that? Yeah, that, that's something that can be. Yeah, it's just making sure that the requirements are met and that by the standards of the Department of Environmental Protection. And then for.
Good question on that.
Yes, Rich.
That's all, does all of, with all of the things that. Uh, the town has, is a subdivision be regulated by DEP? That are, would, are we sure that DEP would require, um. A, uh, chapter five hundred permit for all the subdivisions that we would deal with? I, I don't know the answer to it. But maybe George knew because he recommended it as to whether or not. You know that everything that we get would have gone through a DEP.
No, but the way this is written is it's, would only apply for those instances where it would be required.
Hmm.
So if DEPs are, you know, if it is required under state law and he does the review. Why don't we defer to DEP is all I'm suggesting.
Yeah, and I agree with that.
So would you say, would you say we should just strike? A? And just require a DEP permit? If you don't want that site location visit or the site location SLDA permit? Because if for. A and B, if you're just requiring a, a, a management plus or more manager plan that is. Required by DEP chapter five hundred and both, that can just be the minimum standard. I'm not. I'm not sure what you're suggesting, that's why I was a little confused on this.
I, I was just wondering whether, and, and it's. It maybe, uh, because I didn't understand both A and B paragraph, but I, I thought perhaps some DEP. Maybe because I didn't understand both A and B paragraph, but I I thought perhaps some DEP. Permit, not all, I was wondering whether everything that we required. In a uh for subdivision that required the submission of the. Um, stormwater management, that I want to make sure that there weren't projects that D. Subdivision or issues that where DEP didn't get involved in a stormwater management. I think George answered it. Um, by saying that. This seemed to be only um directed at the ones that are done by DEP. Is that correct?
So George, what would be, is your suggestion simply just to require the submission of a DEP chapter five hundred permit?
Uh, well, if if it if it triggers or if a subdivision does. Um, fall under chapter five hundred and require permit from DEP. Then rather than submitting additional information to us, just submit the the DEP permit, be done with it.
And that, would that be for A and B there?
Yeah.
All right. That's what I was trying to figure out. See, we can easily remove and then D. Do we just want to align it with the shoreline zoning and commercial development ordinance?
Uh, basically, yeah, that that's what I was suggesting.
That's a simple change. I think that bring it in line with um. Belgrade. All right, going down to, are we happy? Or is that, is that just a simple fix that we doesn't need much more conversation? Okay, thirteen. Okay, we can pay two. George, do you want to revisit all of cluster development?
Well. It was really how how the the key issue for me was. How does, I I didn't understand from reading it, how it the it meshes with. Shoreland, our shoreline zoning and minimum lot size ordinance requirements regarding lot size and road frontage. And maybe that's just me, um, maybe the others understand it. I, you know, if somebody asked me to apply that today, I wouldn't be able to.
Right. Yeah, I'm, I don't really want to go into that right now, because I think it does require a little bit more of like a matrix of thinking. And it is getting late, so would you?
Yeah, that's fine.
And we can kind of come back to that. I know that there's some weird stuff at the state level with cluster developments. Not this would be created with a particular intention. Because I know that they put a lot of in the reason behind this, and I don't have their like comments that go alongside, but I remember this section in particular. Had a lot of them. Um, I could be confusing with something else, but I'll revisit cluster developments. Um, section fourteen, compliance with timber harvesting rules, that's very standard. I think that's common language in most towns unless they have a larger lumber. Language, so we'll go continue down to fifteen, which is George's next note. Um, but I also think fifteen might be a good stopping point. As well, and that's the traffic conditions in streets. Um, because I I know that George's notes stop at A three. And there's a little bit eleven, but the traffic conditions in streets is a. Large standard. It's a large section. And we can kind of, and going down further, it's a lot of street stuff too. So if we wanted to stop here, we can.
That's a good idea to me.
Yeah, so Peter, I'll defer you. I can keep going. You could do this all night.
Right, right.
Um, but if you do have additional businesses, this might be a good time to stop and we can.
I know Mac has pointed out how the clock is ticking, not for tonight's meeting, but.
Right, in general. When is your town meeting?
Town meetings in March.
Yeah, I mean. Fact of the matter is, if we didn't have a draft by now, it's already too late.
I agree with you.
For town meeting.
And we could expand the moratorium if we need.
Right. I mean, the moratorium, when's the moratorium end in April?
I think so, I'm not sure.
There's a hundred and eighty days from November third, is that right?
Yeah, that's right.
So that'd be.
Six months, November to.
Yeah, April, right? April third.
I mean, when you work back from when we have to submit things that are go on the warrant. You're talking, you know, end of Ju- January usually is when town office asks for that kind of stuff. Maybe early February. You know, and then there's, there has to be a public hearing. I it, I think we're already, you know, we've already missed the deadline.
Yeah, I mean, with the means we can, if we want to keep going tonight, I'm up for it. I'll let the planning board kind of decide.
Uh, Peter, question, uh, you know, um. We got some other business tonight, and so, you know. We got too much on the plate right now, so somehow or another, we gotta. Uh, what what, if we do a moratorium, you know, uh, it kind of makes sense to me. Yep, I hear you, Pete. Um, and I know Adam's been waiting very patiently to to get to his business, and I. Want to remain sensitive to that as well. Um, Charles, you talked about this traffic standard is kind of a larger discussion or.
It's not really a larger section. It's one of those things that we can, we don't have to go line by line, but this is where it would need some alignment with. Um, ten point fifteen point one. I think that George's note is just a question mark. Uh, so I, it's one of those things where we can kind of go through it and just. Finish it. We do have. Don't have that much more left. It's just the the sidewalk language if we want to go through that. Uh, private talks about private roads. And there might be things like we that we have picked out already tonight, and it just does require that Belgrade eye to it.
Charles, is that something we could take up at a at a? Another time, because I think we've already talked about maybe you, George and myself.
I think what, what I think would be. The best would just to be to kind of meet outside of the planning board. And just me, you and George kind of go through this section, make any notes. And bring that back so we can have a really, really structured conversation that. Because I don't want to, I don't want to make any changes or suggestions myself without going through the planning board, so I would like to work with. Members of the planning board outside the meeting just to like, really nail down some questions, because there is the whole thing too of do we want to keep major and minor? Um, then do we want to move phosphorus controls standard to a separate ordinance or keep it in here? Uh, I think these are more thematic conversations that. At least previously, I don't know if you guys had talked about it, Nick, because according to Nick's notes. That was the change to use the model ordinance to combine it into one subdivision, not separating between the two. Um, but then last time at the meeting, we talked about maybe we should keep that as major and minor. Um, and obviously, the final just. Review of it would be important as well to make sure that there are any holes in the process, because we have jumped around a little bit too. Um, so I don't, I don't know if we're going to take this off the table for March, or we're going to try to push it through. But I do think we can, if we meet before the next planning board meeting, at least a week before to provide the material. I think we could potentially finish this, and I can push it to a little bit to make sure that I can get all the language and all the edits in.
Through respect to the uh road and transportation section, the the only things that I actually had were the questions that I've listed in my memo. So I don't, I don't have anything else. If that's what you're asking.
Yeah. Um. Then if not, then like, looking at your final comments, those are just. Looking through the comp plan, what I'm going to do regardless is making sure that the com- the language in the comp plan. Reflects this, and then we can talk with the fire chief. I can shoot him an email or a phone call. To talk about the cul-de-sac standards for adequate adequacy for fire trucks. Um, because those are really, I mean. Um, these aren't really discussion points, so to say, it's more, is this? The standard for the state law and the comp plan? So potentially, we have discussed for the most part. This section, um, and the performance guarantee is George, just your one final comment, but you also wanted to have. Uh, direct sunlight for roof type solar in the ordinance. Um. I'll let you kind of take the lead there, just so we can finish it up.
Yeah, I mean, that's in our existing ordinance, um. And it's also mentioned in the state subdivision law.
I can just look into that and report back.
Peter, the other thing that we as a board need to do, or somebody needs to do, uh, and I don't know if you want to do it, or. You want to delegate one of us to do it, I'd be glad to do it if you want, is. Talk to Anthony, to ask Anthony to get us a map of the salt contamination plume.
Yeah, that's a great idea. That would be needed. Um, I'm gonna, Sheila, could I, could I ask you that? You please ask Anthony to provide that for us?
I can, I can make a note of it too, just to reach out to Anthony.
All right, thanks. So I I guess I want to put this on the table that I'm willing to meet um outside of this to help go through some of the things that are in. Yet be discussed, so.
And I think any final, any, I wouldn't say final draft, but any complete draft that I give to you will note these changes. Um, just more outright to make sure that we're not deciding as the three of us.
Right, right.
Right.
Um, I mean, even any changes we made tonight, I'll note, because there's a lot of that, where like, we're not sure exactly what the language is, but.
Yeah, no, I'm I'm happy, happy to, um. You know, contribute in a separate meeting, if that's okay with everybody else.
What does that mean that you guys are going to make this up, and then it comes back, and then we have to go through it anyways? And discuss it anyways, or we're just accepting what you guys do, or, I mean.
I would bring it back to the.
Comfortable with it myself, but.
We, it can be an open invite too. It doesn't have to be us three. It can just be like a separate work session.
I'm, I'm happy for you guys to do that work and then come back with a draft. Like, I'm thinking in terms of scheduling February, because. Gary, you can chime in here, what's on the board for the first meeting in January, but I don't think that's going to happen, and I would. I would much prefer February, because I need time to look over this. Uh, draft that you come up with, and I'm not going to have time over Christmas break for sure, so.
Matt, I think, I think, I think that both meetings in January are booked right now.
Yeah, so we're looking at February, and it's going to come back to us. Craig, I agree, I. They can definitely do as much as they can separately, but it's got to come back to the full board for us to review before.
Of course, yeah. Yeah, and I don't intend to make, I don't intend to have any of that conversation, just more to make sure that. The next meeting is as productive and potentially a final meeting on it. Um, if that's okay, if that makes sense to you, Mac. I'm not trying to rush it or anything, but I'm just trying to say that. If we're not going to be meeting in January, I'd rather continue the work and making sure that. We're at least having some of these conversations, or if I do need to do additional fact finding, that we're not delaying it even further.
Well, it's, it sounds, it sounds like, um. If the others are agreeable, and if we do this other meeting to to do some additional work, it would come back to the board. To to talk about potentially uh finalizing this in February. Um. Does, does the board, is that okay with the board members? Richard. Craig, is that okay?
Yeah, I guess.
The, the other alternative is. The other alternative.
Ringing endorsement.
The other alter, the other alternative is keep working on it tonight.
It's not going to be ready anyways, because what's happening in January is going to fall into February meetings, so the chances, you know.
I know, I agree. Yeah, Mac, thinking that same.
Yeah, no, I I I just, I hesitate at the word finalizing, you know. When you say we're going to come back together in February, potentially for a final.
Potential.
Is pause, so as long as you take that word out, everything else.
Yeah, I I just want to have a complete draft, not a final draft. I think there's still a lot of holes in it, and I even think if we did do that, it'd be. I I'm just trying to care, are we not working, if we're not working for the March timeline, then we can say, let's just meet, continue this conversation. At the second meeting in February, that doesn't make a difference to me. But at the interest of the March planning board, or the March town meeting to get this passed, then. We might need to do a little bit of work outside of the planning board.
I think we all, the planning board members, my understanding is we've all agreed, we're not making March.
Yeah, then we can, then we don't have to meet separately, and we can just continue this in February. Then there's no rush.
Yeah, so so then we have to just coordinate with the town manager and others to let them know that. On our workload, which has been tremendous, that um, that we're not going to be able to meet them March town meeting. Sounds like a good plan.
Cool.
All right, so Sheila, um, do you mind just letting Anthony give give him a heads up that on our discussion tonight that. We feel that we're not going to make the town meeting deadline of this?
Sure, I'll tell him first thing in the morning.
And I'll be happy to speak to Anthony too about this, so that there's, you know. And he knows we've been super busy with stuff, so.
Yeah, and I can just make the change we discussed tonight, and we'll return in February, or we'll probably not in January is a better way to phrase it.
Yeah, probably.
Cool.
So are we, are we okay then to stop at ten fifteen?
Yeah, I, did Sheila hear that your request for the map?
Well, yes, do a double check. Um. So Sheila, did you hear that request? Um, we were wondering if there was a map that would show the. Salt intrusion areas that we're talking about.
Yeah, the the extent of the contamination plume.
Wait, and you said that Anthony would probably have that?
If it exists.
If it exists, that if Anthony has it, or if Anthony would be in consultation with DOT. Whoever it is that would have something that we could look at would be great.
Okay. I know.
Thank you, Sheila. Okay, so are we stopping at ten fifteen for tonight's discussion? Sounds like it. So Charles, thank you so much. Really appreciate your guidance. Um, we'll be.
Yeah.
More.
Yep.
Excellent.
I'll make the changes. I'll make the changes and do the research and send that over to you, I don't know if I'll get it done before the holidays, but. At least the first weekend, but I might have some time to do it before then.
Okay. Alright, thank you so much.
Yeah, take.
Thank you, and, and happy holidays.
Yeah, happy holidays.
We'll see you.
Yeah, take her.
Alright, see you. Okay, thanks, everybody, so let's close out. Uh our agenda. I lost it. You did, okay, we have a, it looks like new businesses, the Adam Gardner um shoreline. Zone application. Uh for Kurt Lindland on two eighty-five Foster Point. Map thirty-four lot six. Shoreline on Great Pond, uh it looks like they want to add a sauna office and a changing room. Hey Adam, welcome, thanks for your patience tonight.
No problem, hello.
Okay. Oh, Lord, okay. So, uh does everybody have the application of the planning board members? Yes, super, so the applicant is Adam Gardner from G and L. Construction, uh the owner is Kurt Lindland out of Connecticut. This is down on Foster Point on Great Pond. The proposed activity is to add sauna office and changing room. Number six says existing sewage disposal system typing capacity, this was designed for a three bedroom facility, is that right?
Yes.
Thanks. And uh the present number of bedrooms is three. Post add zero bedrooms. When did you purchase the property? It looks like it was a recent purchase that was, that occurred in two thousand twenty, is that correct?
Yes.
And I see the words new septic, so um. After the purchase was a new septic system put in, is that right?
No, I actually renovated the place in two thousand nineteen and then we did a new septic in two thousand nineteen. Cause the old one had failed, so it's a brand new septic, that's why the plans are attached and it's not an inspection, it's within three years.
Okay, got it, so uh the new septic system was installed then, and then a, a purchase occurred.
Correct.
Gotcha, okay. Total lot area, am I seeing this right, point six three acres?
Yes, right around there, yes.
And then the, the value for number eight, the square footage of unvegetated surface within the shoreline zone. Looks like it's measure uh calculated to be twenty five zero seven, which. I think by your calculations is nine point six percent of the lot, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And number nine, what is the total area of cleared openings? Of woody vegetation. So we have nothing there, so that means there's no cleared openings, is that right?
Did the uh, so Andy Dunbar did all the survey stuff and um there's a Google map of what's there. And he's kind of confused on that, saying that I've been on these other meetings, that's, there's nowhere in the ordinance that really requires that. Other than just on the application, but it's very minimal spot towards the water, we're not cutting any trees, if you look at that picture attached to the permit. Um it'd be. Very minor of what's actually cleared wooded, maybe twenty-five by twenty-five area. In front of the camp, you know, it's just like kind of trees hanging over the camp, you can kind of hardly even see it. I think it's second to last picture or something.
I'm with you, yeah.
Um, Adam, uh uh I don't disagree about. Uh the uh not a lot of cleared opening and stuff, but there, there is a standard in the ordinance, I think it's twenty-five percent. Uh maximum cleared opening of a lot.
Twenty-five?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd probably say it's, it said twenty-five by twenty-five, if that, on that waterside. Just in front of the, just in front of the existing camp. I mean, you can kind of barely see it in that picture.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. And that might be a generous um uh amount, right, twenty-five by twenty-five?
Yeah, I mean, there's not much.
Okay. So my thinking is we want to have some. Value placed in there. As for number nine.
Six hundred and twenty-five feet roughly, square feet, you know, it's twenty-five by twenty-five. Honestly, I decided to talk to Andy Dunbar, she did the survey on it, I'm actually surprised, because I know in some of the other ones, he's drawn in the tree cover. But I don't see it on this one.
So Adam, um I'm just, I was just looking at the, all the pages in the application. And so where this is, where is this proposed to be constructed, this um? Sauna and stuff.
If, are you looking at the application or are you looking at the survey?
I was looking at the application, should I be looking at a different thing?
App on the previous page or drawing.
Yeah, it's labeled Gardner Foster Point map. And it's all highlighted in pink.
Ah, got it, okay.
And they just got the trees spelled out there, but where it sits is kind of like a flat. Opening there, um so it won't be cutting any trees, maybe limbing some up for the structure. Let's, you can see it's just barely out of that hundred foot, so he's got a hundred and two feet to the high watermark. And then the red lining that is the less than twenty percent slope.
Oh, so this is um. So is it greater than twenty percent slope towards the water from this proposed area?
Yes, yeah.
So not that I can call it a flat spot, but that it's not as steep in that area, and then it go- goes more down to the water, it gets deeper.
Correct, so the lots in the um. Slope district. But there's a section of it out of a hundred foot that is out of the slope district. So the idea is to build that proposed building there, it's kind of the only spot on the actual property, it fits. Just barely. So we kind of made the size of the building to what we actually had for a buildable, buildable area.
Um, what, hi, hi Rich, go ahead.
I had, had a question, it may, may not have gotten down that far yet, but uh. The square footage of unvegetated surface is twenty-five oh seven. I assume that must be before you were adding the new structure. Otherwise, we've got the present structure and the new structure is three thousand five hundred and something. Um, which is clearly not twenty-five. Uh so I'm assuming that your twenty-five oh seven is based on what's existing on the lot now?
The existing's twenty, existing right now is twenty-five oh seven. Um, I did not count that number, Andy Dunbar, like I said. Numbers I took off his plans, if you look on the map, it says. Uh house including decks and steps fourteen, driveway sidewalks a thousand, some change, thousand twenty-four, and then the proposed is. Twenty-five oh seven, so the proposed is two thousand ninety-one, it looks like. Twelve point six percent of the area. So the twenty-five oh seven would be existing.
Yeah, that's nine percent and.
Right, and then on.
What, what we want to know, figure out is in the end, when the. Structure is, that's gonna add additional unvegetated surface. Um, it doesn't look like it's gonna be over twenty percent, but it clearly.
It's six. Six hundred, six hundred square feet, I think is what it says. And it says twelve point six percent on that, it's kind of hard to read that map. It'll be twelve point six percent, it's listed right out on the survey.
So what, what goes away so that, or impervious areas, so that when the new? Building comes in, it doesn't increase the total compared to current?
I don't think anything's going away.
Cause the only reason why I asked that is, and, and maybe I'm just not understanding it, um, cause it says existing, and we get a. A total of twenty-five oh seven and proposed, it says. Looks like this is twenty-five. Maybe, is it twenty-five oh seven or is it twenty-six oh seven? Be hard.
Ninety-one. So the pre- present structure is fourteen eighty-three, that's the actual house itself. And then the proposed total structure is the. The two thousand zero nine one, so that is the actual house itself. It's, the driveway is not in that number, so you add the twelve hundred for the driveway in, and that gives you the. Which. I. Here's the same number, I would guess that the. Total, when they added up on the surveys, not correct?
That's what I'm thinking, too.
The percentage is, it's just twelve point six percent of the lot area, he changed that.
Right.
If you add those up, okay, I just went off the numbers he gave me, because he's gonna be more accurate than. Me actually going out there, you know, the tape measure? One four, it's like eight, three. Yeah, it's like three thousand two hundred and eighty-three total.
Okay.
Divided by twenty-six, one fifty-seven roughly, yeah, twelve point five percent.
Yeah. So, so the, it, it looks like the, the percentage calculation is, is probably done based on the new value. But I was confused, just because the numbers are the same in both the existing and proposed totals.
Agree, I said, I never even really looked at it and I took what he gave me and he, he actually. I have a permit in front of me, that's all filled out from Andy Dunbar. To put in there, I just took those numbers and put it onto that permit. Um, to be honest, so I'd never really went back to check those, but the twelve point five percent's correct, he just never totaled it up. Or whoever's drawing the CAD didn't total it up, so however, we have to deal with that, um. Let me know and we'll, we'll have to correct it somewhere, either on that set of survey or on this permit.
Okay, uh so board members, what questions do we have for Adam this time, or comments?
I'm all set.
Thanks, George. Uh Pete, do you have any questions for Adam?
No.
Craig, do you have any questions for Adam?
No.
Uh Rich, anything?
No, no more.
No more, okay, and Mac, I, I see you there, any questions for Adam? No, okay. Alright, so. So from my perspective, it seems like we want to make sure that there's a, some kind of a. Reconciliation of totals that are. That are uh correct and, and submitted for the town, at some point, we'd want to make sure that happens. Not suggesting that he spend more money necessarily, but. That this map is a good map. If it were correct there, there'd be a no brainer to me, I'm just suggesting, that's all. And how do the other board members feel?
Maps, okay.
Isn't it already there, it's just not added together, isn't that the whole thing?
It's not added together right anyway.
It's not correct.
Well, I can't see it, um.
It, it was hard, I, I had a hard time too, Craig. Somehow we just have to represent the new uh proposed impervious area total, correct, so that. So that's right.
Yeah. And I had one other, I did have a question of.
Surely.
Adam, um on the uh map, the drawing, what is the um? Uh they, from the uh new building. In front of it's got like a point. Uh it's a red line, it kind of goes as a. Now, it looks like some kind of air, point of a uh. An arrow or whatever, heading, pointing toward the water right in front of the buildings, what, what does that signify?
So the red line.
Yeah.
Goes everywhere, that is the less than twenty percent slope.
Okay.
So that would be, if you take the yellow dotted line. Anything inside the yellow dotted line on a normal piece of property would be buildable, because it's out of a hundred foot, and has your ten foot setbacks and your road setback. And then inside the red line is anything that's be buildable, so if they wanted to, you know, do a. Small walkway building, that's the only spot on that property that would be buildable. So it's just, that's like a flat area, it kind of extends out, it's a little stone pile, I think it's noted on there, just kind of. It was always graded for a driveway or something at one point in time, you know, probably back in the fifties or sixties or something.
Thank you.
Yep.
We had this piece of property in front of us before. We had this piece of property in front of us before. Um, didn't wait for a sale of the property or something and, and wasn't just brought up at one point before.
This one, I actually, I actually purchased this last summer, um, fixed it up and then sold it. They pulled the permit, I believe Andy Dunbar pulled the permit to rebuild it. Um, to, I think to actually tear it down and rebuild it, we ended up, keeping the roof structure, rebuilding all the walls and everything back to that permit.
It doesn't have anything to do with this, but, sorry.
Nope.
Any more questions on this? Or comments? Are you gonna reconcile your, uh, you, you had a issue with the reconciliation between the map and the calculation, something, Pete? Yeah, I'm suggesting that we would wanna have the correct value. So how do you wanna do that?
I would.
Have, have him put a reconciliation right on the application, on this map itself and Ian writing it tonight, or, or, could we do that? We have to meet again.
Do it by condition, can we?
I get, I, I was thinking we could do it by condition, uh, if there's agreed. Board members agreed.
Looked like, uh, that Adam had a suggestion, I saw, I thought I saw his hand. I was just gonna mention that my thought would be to have Andy Dunbar fix it on the map and I'd resubmit that survey to the town. Possibly as a condition, cause it's right on there, it's all surveyed by, you know, an engineer and that would, everything's correct, other than that one number. I'm sure he would update that and, you know, make that a condition would be my recommendation, but.
I like that idea myself, and I'd be, I'd be agreeable to that.
Me too.
Okay, so, so before anything else happens, I just wanna make it, ask an administrative question. Uh, typically with a, a, uh, shoreline zone application, if it is, um, approved, we have the findings of fact form go through, remember that, everybody? Right, so, um, it's, so, uh, I guess number one, uh, I didn't see that in this packet, I don't know, um, Sheila, I have a question for you, if you have a minute. You know that fillable form? That you sent, sent me? Am I supposed to, uh, use that one that you sent before, or would, would we see a new one each time?
Okay, so you haven't saved it to like your desktop or anything, I can email it to you if you'd like, right?
Um, just one second, I, I, I may have saved it, I save most everything, but, um, uh, cause I think you sent it to me twice, so hang on. Findings of fact PDF. Okay, stand by. Okay, so I have that there. Okay, I think I have it, just one second, I apologize. Okay, I do, I have it, thank you.
So, but, but I can do in the future is send it with a packet, if you prefer.
No, that's okay, I will just always continue to go to this, to this one that I, that I have, um. I just hadn't, I didn't see it in the package, I just wanted to make sure I was asking the right question, that's all.
Okay.
So administratively, planning board, I wanna make sure we're going through this the correct way, right? We talked about, um, when we do the findings in fact and conclusions of law, that, going through that led to one thing. And, uh, Mac, I don't wanna misconstrue this at all. When we talked about this last time, um, is that your recommendation too, is that when we go through this, that in, in fact, results in, when we vote, that that would be an approval? Yes, and George is saying yes, alright. Alright, so, um, administratively speaking, so if we have a, do, would, do we do this first, or do we do a motion? Or something, how do we do that?
I would suggest we go through the findings of fact, which will then lead to a motion for approval with, whatever, if any, conditions.
I agree.
Okay, I'm good with that, please bear with me, I have to do some typing as we go along here. I'm here at P O Box five fifty. Is that right?
Uh, five thirty.
Five thirty, sorry. Upgrade Lakes.
Yep.
Zero four nine one eight. This is a tax map. This is not auto, automatic, Adam, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
For this property, this is tax map, which one?
Thirty-four six, map thirty-four lot six.
Thank you. Alright, the applicant, the applicants on date applied for the shoreline permit for which project? This is called the Lindland property. Build sauna. Office changing room. The applicant was presented to the, the application was presented to the planning board on, day's date is twelve seventeen two thousand twenty. These findings of fact and conclusions of law were developed in conjunction with the consideration of the permit application, number two. Conclusions of law based upon the application materials, testimony, statements, evidence, documents and others, material submitted to it and above the findings of fact. The board finds that the project is or is not a permitted, uh, use under fourteen, this is what we vote, we'll vote, we go through eight things, that allow us to either say that it is or is not. So. Adam, what we've done before, I, bear with me if we, if you've seen this in action, we've only done it once. Each of the things, we do a roll call vote and, uh, it's fairly, fairly quick per item, but it does take up some time, okay? A little bit, so, thank you for your patience. So, um, the first one, this is, um, under conclusions of law, that this application will, maintain safe and healthful conditions, so by a vote of, what, what, to what the board found that the standard was or was not met. And I think we used language before, um, can anybody remember what the standard language was that we used?
Yeah, I, I actually wrote it down, I thought it might become useful.
Thank you.
Might be worth copying, pasting it. Based on materials submitted and public record. Is that what you were looking for, the basis?
Yes. So.
So based on materials submitted and the public record.
In the public record. Um, so last time we voted on each one, so I would recommend that we still continue to do that unless I'm told otherwise, right? So, roll call vote for, uh, on this one, that it will maintain health, safe and healthful conditions, so, uh, George?
Yes.
Mac?
Yes.
Uh, Pete?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
And Rich?
Yes.
And I say yes, that's six in favor, none opposed. Uh, number two, will not result in water pollution, erosion or sedimentation to services. By a vote of, uh, whatever, the board found the standard was or was not met based on, I'm thinking that's the same, uh, based on materials submitted in the public record. Um, in this case, I'll do a roll call vote, uh, so for, it will not result in water pollution. Erosion or sedimentation.
Mac's trying to get your attention, Peter.
I, I know.
I, I don't, um, I'd like to put somewhere in the application, number nine is blank, about the cleared openings of vegetation. Where we're putting the condition somewhere to clarify the map, can we put a condition also that, this gets filled out or stated?
Yes, uh, and, and thank you for your flexibility in that, um, I, I immediately thought of that when we were going through, uh, this, that, uh, when we receive the application, we're asking for all the values to be put in. And I think Adam's done a great job in that in the past, there might have been some confusion on this particular value this time. Um, but we are asking for that each time, so. So I think we can handle it by a condition though, so. Alright, so is that okay, Mac? So it sounds like we're, two conditions are brewing, right, for this? If not a third, I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, so for the, uh, will not result in water pollution, erosion or sedimentation to surface waters, do you vote in favor that this application supports that or not? Mac?
Oh, y- yes, I just.
Okay, thank you, it, it, cause we started off and George had said yes, right?
Oh, oh, sorry.
Mac said yes, uh, Pete?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And I say yes, so. Uh, number three, will adequately provide for the disposal of all wastewater. So by a vote of X to X, the boat found this standard was or was not met. So, um, are you comf, is the board comfortable with the same language based on materials submitted in the public record? Um, so a vote please, so George?
Yes.
Mac?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
And Rich?
Yes.
And I say yes, so. Number four, will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird or other wildlife. So, I vote of X to X, the board found this standard was or was not met based on, same language that we talked about. So, um, uh, voting please, so George?
Yes.
Mac?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
I say yes, so. Uh, number five, will conserve, uh, shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland waters. So by a vote of X to X, the board found this standard was or was not met based on, uh, still, they, materials submitted in the public record. Vote, uh, George?
Yes.
Mac?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And I vote, yes, so, uh. Number six, will protect archaeological and historic resources as designated in the comprehensive plan. Um, by a vote of X to X, the board found this standard was or was not met based on, is that appropriate to put based on materials submitted in the public record?
Or the lack thereof.
Or the lack thereof, right, right. Yeah, okay. So we're, so based on the materials submitted in the public record. George, would you feel comfortable if I wrote that explicitly?
Yeah, I, I would.
So, based on the public record, uh, based on materials submitted in the public record, and then I'll just say comma. Or the lack there of, is that okay? Okay, uh, voting, George?
Yes.
Uh, Mac?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so six in favor. None. Opposed. Number seven, will avoid problems of, associated with the flood plain development and use. By a vote of X to X, the board found the standard was or was not met. George?
Yes.
Uh, Mac?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Uh, Craig?
Yes.
Uh, Rich?
Yes.
I vote yes. Number eight, this is a larger one. Is in conformance with the provisions of fif, of section fifteen-one land use standards. We have, uh, a number of these things to go through, so, first one, has to do with minimum lot standards, um, and this where, we're, we're putting in language that's appropriate for, uh, this particular standard, so, for minimum lot standards, uh, are we saying that this is based on materials submitted and the public record?
Yes, I, I would say so.
Okay. And B, uh, principal and accessory structures, same thing?
Yep, yes.
Campgrounds?
And A.
It really is in a, private, it, I'm sorry, individual private camp sites. Commercial and industrial uses?
Uh, and A.
Uh, parking areas?
None proposed.
Not, none proposed. Want to write that exact thing? Roads and driveways?
Same.
Or signs?
And A.
Stormwater runoff?
Yes, um, again, based on material submitted in the public record, the the site plan has uh stormwater management features already on it.
As stormwater? What was the last word?
I'm sorry.
I said, based on the materials record, do you want me to also include the site plan has stormwater?
Oh, no, I, I, I think based on materials submitted and the standard language would be fine.
Okay, I'm good. Uh, J, uh, septic waste disposal systems.
You know.
And A, I guess.
Essential services?
And A.
Mineral extraction?
And A.
Agriculture?
And A.
Timber harvesting and land management roads?
And A.
Clearing or removal of vegetation for activities other than uh timber harvesting? Is that none proposed? Or?
Like, Adam, there's some clearing, is there trees gonna be cutted off?
I think it says one, that's like a little eight foot hemlock, but other than that, nothing.
So.
Shows one, one little, yeah, on where that deck is, everything else is wide open other than coverage above it.
Okay, and, and I'm not looking at, since I'm typing, I'm not looking at the application. So does, is that part of the materials submitted or is it?
Yes.
So, does the board?
Well, wait a minute, w- it's part of the record, because Adam just put it on the record.
And four. Got it. Hazard trees, storm damaged trees, and dead tree removal. Uh, Q exemptions to clearing, so exemptions to clearing and vegetation removal requirements. Is that N A?
I would say so.
Uh, revegetation requirements?
And A.
And sedimentation control?
Is that?
What's that?
I said, was that part of the central erosion control plan?
Oh. I would say so.
Yeah.
Stabilization.
Yeah, no, we have one. And, and Adam has his, you know, certification number.
So, so what would be the appropriate language to put in here, just, um?
I think based on materials submitted and public record, I mean.
Hey. Great, soils? We had that in the plan, I think.
Um, yeah, it's submitted, you know, it's part of the uh septic plan.
Yep. Water quality? Is that N A or is that? Or maybe it's fair to say, based on materials submitted in the.
Yeah. Correct.
Um, historical and archaeological site?
And A.
Then resource protection.
Soon this is a limited residential district, is correct? After going getting this far.
Resource protection. Resource protection, this isn't a, or?
Isn't, isn't the uh steep slope resource protection, but he specifically put the building in the non-step slope?
That's correct. So, so, um, could we use language such as, um, uh, proposed activity?
Just use the same language, can't you? Provided.
Is what? Is what?
Um, well, it was provided to us, so what you were saying.
We got you, okay.
Yeah. Showing on the site plan.
Hey, gotcha. Um, and then conditions of approval need to be met required, uh, Belgrade shoreline zone findings in section sixteen D, this has to do with managing stormwater runoff, newer and expanded structures. Um, this is that uh standard condition that we have in there, um.
Actually, I don't think we need that in this particular case, because Adams provided a stormwater management measures in the site plan.
So, that's a good way to, that's a great thing to say, George, because at the end of this condition, it says note, this is a standing condition that applies to all permits unless deemed unnecessary by the planning board based on the following rationale. The rationale is what you just said.
Okay.
Which, which, do, do you mind just saying that one more time, because I?
Sure, no, uh, uh, stormwater management measures are included in the project site plan.
So I've written down, hopefully I've captured it correctly, stormwater management measures are included in the project site plan.
Yep.
And so that is it for that aspect of findings affecting law. So we haven't yet voted on number eight. So based on all those things in number eight that we just went through, all those uh, voting, so George?
Yes.
M- Mac, if you're there?
Yes.
Thank you. Pete?
Yes.
Uh, Craig?
Yes.
Rich? Was that a yes?
Yes.
Okay, and I, I would say yes, so that would be, uh. Okay, um, so I think at this point, we've gone through all of the things for the, um, these eight uh, conclusions of law, which is pa- found on, you know, ordinance. Um, at this point, I think we are ready to to vote on whether or not this based upon the application materials, testimony, statements, evidence, documents, and other materials submitted to it, and the above findings of fact. The Belgrade planning board finds that the project is or is not permitted. So I would say this is where we would vote um for this one. Uh, unless someone objects to this approach, please let me know.
Peter, or is it at this point that you're looking for a motion?
I, that's, that's what I would be expecting, so, um, yes, I'd be.
So I would make a motion to prove the application with two conditions or two additional conditions. Uh, the first, um. And I, I'll read it, and then I'll read it again. If that'll help, uh, amended site plan with corrected proposed unvegetated area to be submitted prior to January fifteenth two thousand twenty-one. So that's amended site plan with corrected uh, unvegetated, uh, corrected proposed unvegetated area to be submitted prior to January fifteenth two thousand twenty-one. And then the second would be provide total area of cleared openings of woody vegetation prior to, um, January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you. So just one second, um, I want to check with Sheila to make sure you're able to capture those two. Yeah?
George, can you give me the second one again, please?
I'm sorry, repeat which one or both of them?
The second one.
Second one, um, provide total area of cleared openings of veggie, woody vegetation uh prior to, uh, January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Got it, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor with two conditions. May I have a second? I got it. And Pete's second, um, motion with two conditions, it's been seconded. Any more discussion? Okay, um, all those in favor, so, uh, do a roll call. George?
Yes.
Mac?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
I vote yes, six in favor, none opposed, um, it passes.
This. Either. I don't want to nitpick, but there's only five members. Oh, yeah, I've been voting and it's on these things, and I'm not supposed to be voting tonight. I just don't want us to get caught later on, you know, and.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Good catch.
Yep. Good, excellent catch. Thank you very much. Five in favor and none opposed. Okay, thank you very much. So this passes. Um, I'll make some corrections in my fillable form, um. This passes, it'll be mailed to you. So Sheila, when we get done, I will uh forward to you. Okay? Alright, thanks. Um. The that should be it. Adam, are you okay with that date that we talked about, the fifteenth?
Yep, yeah, no, it's perfect. Thank you very much. Enjoy the, the holidays.
Thanks, happy holidays, Adam. We'll talk to you later. Thank you very much. Alright.
Rich, just to clarify, just because you don't get to vote doesn't mean your opinion's not valued. Yeah, I, I gotta remember that when everybody's there, I need to shut up when it comes to voting.
Um, thank you all, and Mac, thanks for, for making sure that we're on, on target with things. We want to do things correctly, so. It is not being nitpicky at all. Um, I think next up was to go over the minutes uh, from the third, and Sheila, thank you for providing them. Let's take a minute to go through these. It looks like there have been some, um. Edits made already. Okay, um. Are we ready to go through the minutes? Yes, um, any suggested edits or, uh? Anything, go ahead, George.
No, I, I was tilting my screen.
Okay, yeah. Alright, Mac? Any edits, Mac? Rich?
Uh, I've got a, a couple of potential edits. So one is uh, clearly an edit, but uh, if you go to the second page. Uh, second paragraph, it says, Rich Baker motion to accept the shoreline application. Should a better word be approved? Or is, does accept, uh? Uh, this is where we're actually approving the project.
Um.
I'm thinking, uh, we usually accept the completed ordinance, uh, appu- we accept the application and approve it in the end.
Yeah, I, I hear.
Maybe semantics, it isn't worth monkeying it.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I hear what you're saying, and I think I would, you know. I would, there's a connotation, or there's a meaning with accept means, meaning like, um, it is incoming versus approval is, we've gone over it and approve that it should, you know, as an application to go forward.
I think, I think Rich makes a good point, especially because in the previous paragraph, it says Max Stokoe motion to accept and review.
Yeah.
But I think there we're saying, we're using the word except to mean allow in, you know, that it, it's.
Right. Um, so I, I would, I would like to see the wording say approve uh, rather than accept. Uh, I guess I would. I, I don't have the minutes in front of me, I don't have the, um, the recording like Sheila would have. We may have said the words except, so I, I don't know, but I like the word approve rather than accept, so. So Rich, would you like to see approve rather than accept?
I, I think it's, uh, makes more you know, I wouldn't say more sense, but I, I think I like it better than accept. Because as Mac said, I think, kind of like when we get the application, we accept it. And then we approve it when we say everything is okay.
Yep. I agree. Sheila, is that okay? We, you see what we're talking about in those two paragraphs?
So even though, on the one that where Mac says that he motioned to accept and review, so you want?
That would, that would stay the same.
Be accept.
Yeah.
Okay. So it's just where Rich said, except, okay, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, the other comment I had, really minor, but you go to the very bottom of the page, just before adjourn, it says uh, planning board will schedule a meeting with to continue, uh, probably the word with uh, should be stricken.
Yep.
That's what I had.
Thank you, Rich. Mac, I saw your, um, your, uh, button go unmuted there for a second. Did you have something? Okay. Um, Pete or Craig, any edits that we?
No.
Well, I wasn't there.
Okay, alright, um, I don't have any more edits, so, uh. Anybody else? If none, I would entertain a motion on these minutes for December thirty, two thousand twenty.
Uh, make, oh, I can't make any motions. I guess I can't.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Thank you. I need a second.
I'll say.
Alright, we got two.
I've been a second, or, or Peter anyway, but.
Alright.
Greg wasn't there, so I.
Yeah.
My, I'm a voting member for this one.
Yeah, alright.
We'll get this right, yeah.
Exactly. So we've got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, so, uh, George?
Yes.
Mac?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
And Craig, you weren't there, right?
Right.
So it means we skip you and go to a full board member, or we can go to Rich for this, right? Because he was there, and he said yes, and I say yes, so five in favor, none opposed. All right, that covers that one, um, and we've done the agenda, uh, any town business we need to know of? Uh, Sheila or Gary? Anything going on? No.
Um, no, I don't have anything, actually.
All right, o- other than the fact that we've got a full plate in January, right?
I, yep.
That's right.
Here are our first meeting in January, is that also taken up by a commercial development, or is it just a bunch of?
I can't. I can't remember, we'll have to ask Sheila, do you remember Sheila, what was on there?
Um, were we going to meet with Charles again?
I don't know, I can't remember. I think we might have been.
I think we had, we, we had one small application.
I think we were going to meet with Charles.
Yeah, I think it was a meeting with Charles again.
Yeah, and I blew that, because I said I didn't think it was.
And then we have, but now we'll have the Dunkins.
Yep, and, and Charles?
We and Charles, and then we had a smaller application.
So we need, we need to, we need to let Charles know, because I think he thinks he's coming back in February now.
Right.
Okay.
If we can squeeze him in.
Yeah, the twenty-first is Sean Grant, Bright Side Marina.
Right.
Commercial Development Review.
And that's everything that day?
That's all for that day.
Yep, cool beans.
So we'll have to talk to Charles and let him know that we did have him scheduled for the seventh, I, I blew that, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
Yep.
All right, any other town business?
Yeah, can I just, um, we, we reviewed the Duncan application tonight, and she ended up withdrawing it, right? Because she can't do it, but all, all this talk of um, the last one that we approved, where they didn't fill in number nine, the woody vegetation? I remember looking at the map for Duncan, thinking, man, that lot is really cleared. And the photos, all the photos of the house, it shows just lawn everywhere, and I was thinking, that, that's just crazy.
It, it is lawn.
But, but then I looked at the actual application, and number nine says five thousand square feet out of a total lot area of thirteen thousand square feet. So she's way over twenty-five percent right now. So does that mean that we cannot approve any application?
Well, she's not gonna do the addition now, she's gonna build on the same footprint as the deck already, so she's not adding any impervious area.
I know she's not adding any impervious area, but because she's already over twenty-five percent, can we not? Is it, is she allowed to do anything in the shoreline zone without us requiring revegetation? Because the way I read the ordinance, it says you can't add more than twenty-five percent at all, period.
Well, when she's done, she's still not gonna have any more.
She's not adding any.
Right, she's not making it more non-conforming, I guess I agree with that.
Right, because it's on the same footprint as the deck.
Right.
No, it's a pretty well-cleared lot, she's got lawn right to the, right to the water's edge, basically. It's a very flat lot, I mean, it's, it's completely flat, but it's, but it's, it's lawn. It's not, it's, there's not a lot of woody vegetation.
Yeah. Okay.
And Mac, to your point, or partially to your point, we'll certainly have to deal with storm water coming off the roof of the, uh, um, you know, the, the, what she's going to be building on, on the enclosure for the deck.
Yep.
Yep, it's a good question, though, Mac, about, you know, sort of conceptually, what could be done with a thing like that?
Right.
Application like that in those conditions, that's a question.
Okay.
All right, um, any other town? I'm sorry?
I'm just sorry to drag it on.
No, you're not, it's, it's good stuff, man, it's good. Um, any other questions? Or any other town business? Before we go, Craig, how are you feeling?
Doing better. Uh, getting stronger all the time.
Fantastic, thanks for hanging with us tonight, re- really appreciate it. Um, is your, uh, physical therapy going okay, doing stuff?
Uh, I can do everything. Strength, gaining the strength in my arm was big.
Oh my god.
I went, in two days, I went from being able to do six arm bends with an eight pound weight to thirty, two sets of thirty, so.
Excellent.
It's coming back.
And that was, you said two pounds?
Eight pounds.
Eight pounds, oh, that's way more than a beer, that's fine.
Are you gonna hammer?
But I couldn't even do it, six of them, that's all I could get done, and then it increased just like that.
Yep.
So.
Going to dockside?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, good for you, man, that, that's excellent, keep up the good work, hope it all goes well.
Hope to be back to work in three, about three weeks or so, hopefully, three, four.
Good deal.
Back to work, I'm getting tired of sitting down.
Yeah. Yeah.
Angry.
Uh, all right, um, so thank you, everybody, for all you do, um, I really appreciate it, um, Merry Christmas, happy holidays, enjoy time with your family, uh, we'll sign off for tonight. Sheila, thank so much, I'll send you that, uh, fillable form here in just one second, okay?
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays.
Have a great night.